Planning Board. I called the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board meeting for April nineteen twenty twenty two to order. The first item on the agenda is all business Laura Panzero at Gigi's. Review and amended site plan for additional outdoor parking. Is everyone? This Piper, good evening Piper. Okay, so we has everyone seen the letter from Justin who's here with Ryan tonight?
Um, yes.
Yes.
And Justin calculated based on the seventeen spots that were in the site plan. That Gigi's would need three additional parking in lieu of spots. Is that understanding to Laura and Piper?
So um, I was I was no able to meet with Ryan and Justin on Tuesday. And I got Justin's letter today. I was really hoping that I could defer. Is it called defer whatever this meeting until for two weeks just so I had an opportunity to review everything?
Well, that that sounds good because what Justin would like to do is his suggestion. But we'd like to really have a map, you know, of the parking lot of your parking lots and what spots? What what the furniture store, the bookstore, the clothing store? What spots are allocated to them and how it all adds up? We're trying to get maps of all the parking lots in the village every time someone comes in. And wants to open a business and go from retail to a restaurant or vice versa. We know how many spots are allocated. We know how many parking and Lewis fees were paid in the past. We can actually keep track of everything. So if you if you would like to do that, that's great. And you can think about this. And we'd love to have you come up with a little sheet explaining the total number of spots you have in the front and the back. And what's allocated to each business that will be great.
Okay, um. Is that so is it okay then if we? Is it this site or however works if I'm on the agenda?
And yes.
And is it here's my other question. Is it so I'm actually I mean, this is whatever moot point, whatever. But I'm, you know, another reason was just really so that because I'm really gonna. I think it's fair that, you know, I pay for, you know, any kind of like parking in lieu of fees. If that like comes up rather than, you know, my tenant. That's obviously another reason why I just want to like go over everything. And then my other question is since this was approved on, you know, with this contingency on. Whatever I'm sorry, two weeks ago, I guess. Remember that date was is okay. I would like to request that Laura have the, you know, that the resolution from two weeks ago kind of stands for this new two weeks. So that she can use this space for this two weeks. And there isn't like a big like flip flop, flip flop, flip flop, you know. And that because at this point it looked it seems like the only thing that is kind of saying is. You know, the the parking chart, you know, per space, you know, that you're looking for. And I guess it for the parking. Whatever the parking in lieu of fees. I'm sorry, I'm going around and around, but whatever, you know, that seems like the last sort of like point on this is that. According to the resolution.
Well, the the popular Luis whether they're paid for by you or the tenant belong to you.
Correct.
And so we would wanna, you know, that's why we want the chart with all the parking spots. And we would add in the corner, the parking in lieu of fees. And if someone changed one of the stores to a restaurant or something in your property needing more spots. Those spots could be recycled should Gigi is not be there anymore. Could the spot stay with you forever?
So it's like unit what you're looking for is like unit like number two has X amount, you know, number like three and whatever and so forth.
Adds up to the total number of spots you have.
Okay, okay, um.
So Ryan refresh my memory, what did we talk about? We came to an agreement two weeks ago or?
Gigi was given conditional approval chair.
Okay, well, I think I think we're very, very close to this, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I can I can ask them if we want to let the conditional stand and let them add the outdoor tables. The weather is getting nice and then we can deal with this. In two weeks and finalize the agreement. Does that sound good to everyone?
I'm not in favor of that. I I think until we have all the facts presented to us, we should not be making any rushed decisions.
John?
Well, last week or two weeks ago, we gave conditional approval based on two conditions. Owner must come up with the parking allocation for the site. And there was a restriction on the northernmost tables. So it seems to me we've already decided that if they can satisfy their parking, either by providing spaces or providing in lieu. Fee, they have approval. So unless something changes in their application or they don't come up with the. Me and Lou fees, then. Then the decision was made last last meeting as far as I can tell in my notes.
It is like, I mean, I I did. Resolution, so I mean, obviously not on the board, but I do have the resolution that it was one.
But Jeff?
Contingent on like sorting like the, you know, parking per the whatever the parking in lieu of fees and or the parking slots for business is.
For Jeff and Suzanne, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I I wasn't at the meeting two weeks, two weeks ago, so I didn't. And I wasn't able to see the video. It hasn't been posted yet or so I it's new to me that we made a resolution. But John's pointing out that it was made conditional. The fact is frankly, those those tables and seats are sitting out there now, I believe.
Yeah, this afternoon I went out for a walk about four.
Yeah, well.
They are out there if I can speak, I mean, to regard that. I mean, that is also, you know, it was based upon the fact from, you know, the. Either both the resolution and then both also because, you know, left. I don't want to speak out of turn means I know that that this area was used last year. I'm not saying that they're like they used it and actually I was there Friday. No, sorry, Saturday night to pick something up. And it there weren't and nobody was using them.
So the two spots in the northern area were not used over the weekend. They we only used your private area in front of changes, the one that was conditionally approved.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I think the tables are there. I didn't know that whether people are sitting there or not is is really relevant.
It was for conditional approval.
Yes, pointing out the tables are there. Yeah, I mean, there was a conditional approval given two weeks ago. So like John said, it's just that this parking has to be sorted out.
I would I would like to. Again, I wasn't there, but what I would like to see if if the tables are sitting there and if we can say, okay. They can be used for two more weeks. I would not want to see it go beyond then. I don't want to keep getting any deferrals and stuff. And I I am very interested in seeing the results of the analysis that's done. Regarding the allotment of parking space that are given to each of the businesses there. And as my point is this, as long as. We can resolve this in two weeks. I'm willing to let this stuff sit there for two weeks, but if it's not resolved in two weeks, then as far as I'm concerned, all bets are off. The the statement that they were out there last year. Is frankly irrelevant. I mean, we were dealing with a global crisis last year, so we need to take a look at all of these things according to the code. That's my.
The consensus seems to be that, you know, we'll we'll let this go for two weeks, but this must be finalized or else it's going to have to stop. So we have to get to work on the maps accounts and then you can show it, you know, get it to Justin so everything's correct. And then we could go ahead with the final approvals, the parking and little fee, whatever has to be done with the final map. But we have to have the final map in two weeks, okay?
Uh, I mean, it's still it's totally fine for me to get back to you in two weeks. I think I have like full confidence we can like sort it out. It just this week was just hard because of, you know, my kids were off on break. Lauren was away, I you know, I just didn't get the until today, so from.
School break.
CEO pardon me.
School break.
Yes, yeah, you know, I'm a I'm a single mom on many of you know that. So, you know, it's it is what it is, you know. But yeah, I say that again.
We're gonna let this, we're gonna let this go. The consensus seems to be, I understand Michael's feelings about it. Well, let's go for two weeks, but then as Jeff said, we have to have the answer. We have to close it and give a final approval in two weeks so that we're done.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We'll see you in two weeks.
We need we need a motion chair.
Okay, so I need a motion to continue. This item for two more weeks.
I'll make I'll make I'll make the motion that we continue this item for two weeks that there is a conditional approval. But that conditional approval must be resolved one way or the other in the meeting two weeks from now and no longer.
I don't know if we can put a condition on a condition. I mean, we approved it with two conditions. I can say, you know, we would like to get this thing resolved within two weeks so that the fee gets paid so the parking is resolved. But I I'm not sure that we have the right to put some sort of ultimatum on them.
Okay, so but are you saying, John, that they they can say, well, they every two weeks for the next ten years, they can go back and say, well, we had conditional approval. We'll be we'll come back to you in another two weeks.
The the condition was was that they must come up with a part like parking allocation for the site. And I'm just and I think two weeks is reasonable to do that.
Oh, I agree.
But I I'm I'm not saying that there's an ultimatum here that if you don't do it, we pull our approval because that wasn't stated during the original vote.
Okay, well, then if it wasn't stated during the original vote, then I suggest that in two weeks now we re revisit this and we change it. Because it's ridiculous to just say that you, you know, you have to come back at some indeterminate time in the future. I mean, that's that's a nonstarter.
Can I just say one thing? Can I say one thing, you know? I mean, approved, the building size has not changed. I understand that her, you know, outdoor seating has changed, but the building side has not changed in over twenty years or even prior to that. You know, so when we got our original approval twenty years ago. That we were approved according to this, you know, then outdoor giant change and we approved for that. So we're really just looking for a small area of extra seating. My, you know, we have a lot of parking on site. And in comparison to even other properties that have zero parking. So for me to ask for two weeks is is not unreasonable. I I thank you like John and other people who are giving this, you know, to me and to us, but it is not unreasonable. And I guess that's all I'm gonna say on that.
Yeah, I I agree, Piper, thanks for that. I agree, I'm with you, two weeks is not unreasonable and we shouldn't expect it frankly to go beyond that. So I think we're in total agreement. So what do we need to do to close this in this meeting?
We need a second. We need a second and a vote.
I'll make I'll second the motion. We need a roll call vote, Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
Susan Hootsberg.
Aye.
Michael Gee.
Nay.
John Clark.
I'm gonna vote no because I didn't agree to the condition that Jeff put on the resolution, but that's all right.
David Miller, aye. All right, we'll see you in two weeks and let's get this done. We are very supporting our businesses. We want all our business to succeed and stuff. You guys are very important to the village and we try to bend over backwards as much as we can to help business. So, you know, let's get this done in two weeks.
Thank you so much, and I just want to say that I I love your background so much.
That's true, I forgot.
Yeah, I love it.
Working on a project scanning two thousand photos that were donated from the nineteen forties and fifty.
Yeah, I've been I I'm sorry, I've been watching whatever a lot of them, whatever. Yeah, I mean, I've been seeing on Facebook and stuff like that. I love it. I love all those pictures, but yeah, my grandfather right there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Piper.
Okay, the second item on the agenda, which. Is a forty one East Market Street suite number for the Crowe Outdoor Dining. I don't know where we are with this because we we just got a couple of hours ago, an entire new plan. For this. We were trying, we had the fire chief, the police chief. Looking at the spots in terms of tables in the fire zone, tables. You know, Michael Gee and I had a pre meeting with Ryan and Pete Dunn also said the same thing. We're very nervous about someone backing out of one of those spots and crashing into one of the tables. And Pete Dunn wanted some kind of barricade as as do we all. And we were trying to figure out whether, you know, we could lose two spots, what the parking calculation was for that lot. And we got something an hour ago that shows the entire sidewalk, the whole length of the building. Is now they want eight tables. In front of the real estate office, in front of the. Prime store and so on. And I I don't know where we are because. I'd take all the parking in the in the in the lot. What about the other businesses? And these would be permanent tables that would be there. Day and night for the entire season. And if someone wanted to go to the real estate office at nine o'clock in the morning or go over to that the prime and get some some food or something. There's no place for them to park. This is not a Justin, did you get a chance to just look at this or?
I looked at it briefly, but I really haven't had a chance to review it since we just received it.
Is the Crowe here?
Yep, we're on.
What what is your thinking about taking the entire parking lot for these tables?
Well, it's it's actually one extra spot versus what we had proposed last time. We had the first spot, which is what you mentioned in front of prime that was going to go to that doorway. That was the what we talked about two weeks ago. And then when we met with several folks about it, it's it's basically one spot. And the biggest concern was that and Pete would mentioned it, and I think even Kyle Amy, that someone might be backing into that spot. In front of the real estate and could, you know, potentially cause a problem. So when we talked to Joe Kurthaus, who's also on, he suggested we, you know, use the space if we're gonna go for it, go for it. And you'll see on the second drawing, so that's so we've extended the couple of seats because to make it safer. So no car pulls in or pulls out or backs in or backs out. And then we were going to do some sort of barrier like this. With barrels on either end that are concrete and then those would be concrete with plants on, so they look pretty, which is basically what Gabby's has, as you see. And that would be the border that you see along the driveway side. So it's it's actually taking one spot away. That's also technically a private parking space. There the rest of the lot is not being touched. So you're.
How many spots belong to Joe's building? How many spots belong to the bank? And what is it? How many spots relocated for prime? For Rogue for Sotheby's for the I don't know if the liquor store is included in that calculation. It's around the corner.
I think Joe was on, he he had meetings with, I believe, Justin and Ryan as well as Kyle. So I think he can probably chime in. I don't know the particulars for the other suites.
Can can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So all of that information is in the site plan that was approved in two thousand and three, four was that? So I'm not, I'm not exactly too sure. It's just what I remember. It's in your dockets. So my my question is, is there's a concern from the firemen? And also a concern from the police about having, what do you call them? Ballists or some kind of guard to keep the cars from running, from backing into a. A pedestrian on a table? Is that is that the major concern? And also what the allocation of the parking is required for each one? Okay, all right, so which one would you like me to address first?
Well, I guess the backing up, I guess that that was the first concern and Pete Dunn had that as well.
All right, okay, so. I've been in the village since nineteen fifty seven, only sixty five years. And I've worked in the downtown business district in the village since nineteen seventy nine, forty three years. Operating at least two businesses at one time. And there was one fatality in all of that time, and it was very catastrophic. Friends of our family, the father mistakenly stepped on a gas and crushed his wife. On in between his car and the building over by the alleyway near the old Battistoni building. So whether there is a bar, a little sandwich place, cars back up all the time. So if pedestrians are walking on that sidewalk, whether we have a bar or just like we had a retail store there. Or just like we had. A old furniture store, then are we supposed to put ballast up up and down Route three oh eight? So cars don't drive up on the sidewalks and and kill people because I really feel bad it did happen. But that's the only time it happened in forty three years that I've been around. So that's that's a big concern of mine because. I I really don't understand. We we have insurance as a property owner. Our tenants have insurance as businesses. So what's the responsibility? I mean, if we put a ballast up and someone drives over to ballast at a high speed and and kill somebody, are we not liable now? Now the village is going to be liable because you're requiring us to put ballast in and maybe they weren't approved by the DOT. I I'm not too sure how litigious we're gonna get here with that. If we need to put ballot balusters up, that's fine. I don't think they're gonna look as nice as what Keith has proposed. You know what I mean? I I really like something simple like that. I do remember a lady or a man down at the mobile gas station stepping on the gas when they thought it was the break. And they sent the coffee pots across across the mobile gas station convenience store. Fortunately, no one was hurt then. But I mean, when is it gonna stop? How long is the businesses and the business owners and the property owners going to be held responsible for every single? Question that we have. The next thing that I'd like to talk about is the in lieu of fee of parking. I put in like nine or ten thousand dollars. I'd have to look it up. You have it in your records. I don't know what it is, but that was in the eighties and that was for a parking lot. That we had problems in the eighties for no parking. Okay, we still have a problem for no parking because that money is gone that was paid into that in lieu of fee of parking. Okay, so I know there's a grand plan. I respect everything that the planning boards have done since nineteen seventy nine, since I've been in there. And John Clark is a true, true asset of trying to what's going on. But I don't know what the. Time of putting a parking lot is going to take. Is it going to be for my grandchildren or is it going to be for my children? Because it's definitely not going to be for me. And I don't understand how that money, I don't know, I think it was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars collected through nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety. And there's no money for any purchasing of any properties. The village didn't purchase the Buckley School. That would have been perfect place for park. Could have had a community center there and had people park there. But I'm not on the planning board. I'm not on the zoning board. I'm not a trustee. I wish I could help, but I I'm sorry that I'm complaining, but it's just ridiculous on what's being asked right now. I don't want to step over Keith's, you know, have you guys get upset with me and and turn against Keith and his companies that he's trying to operate there. But I need to know what has to be done that we can have parking. We need more volume. That's also parking. And the mayor told me we don't have a parking problem. He says we have a walking problem. But I don't understand how we can do the same volume after year after year and not raise our prices. And I I don't know how much we're gonna be able to pay for a slice of pizza. I don't know what's gonna happen. And I'm really, really concerned because I don't mind paying taxes. I don't mind paying ten thousand dollars more. I paid over forty three thousand dollars in school taxes last year. I don't mind paying fifty three thousand dollars, but I need to sell more wine. Pizza place need to sell more pizza. Every business needs to sell more product and we need parking. And that means we need more volume and we're not gonna get volume if we don't have more parking. So I appreciate what you're trying to do for the safety of people with all these protections and whatnot. But this is like Piper's property. That's private property. She has tables out there. I travel to Canada. I traveled to Manhattan. I traveled to Europe. I like it. I understand you want the businesses to do well. We can say that all the time. We can say, oh, we hope the businesses do well. Well, guess what? The businesses are being close to being on the balls of their ass. Because they have to make up for two years of losses, two years. And I ran a restaurant for twenty five years for my family. And let me tell you something, there is a a string in January, February, March and April. And I've been boots on the ground for those years. Nobody, not a mayor, not a trustee, nobody has ever come to me and see my increase of volume. Nobody has an idea of any of that. And I'm I'm wondering when the questions are going to be taken care of. Because we don't have parking and we've been talking about it since the eighties. And I'm sorry to be a little riled up, but it's really starting to get older.
So Joe, if I could, if I could summarize. What I heard you say is we need more parking. And that the process that is currently employed to manage the parking in the village needs to be looked at and worked on. Because it's not satisfying everyone's needs. Is that safe to say?
Yeah, I talked to the mayor. I said, what about marking the tires with chalk? He goes, oh, that's destruction of property.
Well, I I don't want to.
It's not, it's not, I'm telling you, you mark the bottom of a tire with a slash chalk and you come back two hours later. And you you would solve the problem of all the employees that are parking close, but nobody addresses this.
So there is so just so just to to kind of bring it up to speed. There is an effort that's going to be going on now. Actually, it started comprehensive plan review. One of the things that that group needs to do is to look at a lot of the archaic outdated and frankly ineffective processes we have and come up with solutions. And the public will be allowed to make a lot of suggestions. And it would be good if you could use that vehicle to make a suggestion of marking tires with chalk. Your point about we need more parking, let's get back to the parking allocation. If we need more parking. Asking to remove parking is to me a little bit counter to that sensibility. What what I think will be important, just as was done. Um, what, what I think will be important, just as was done, and we discussed just moments earlier with, um, Gigi's and the buildings that are there. We do need to know a lot better what lots, what spaces are owned by who and allocated to which businesses in whose buildings? So that we have a better idea of what's going on. We, we don't wanna remove parking spaces from an existing location that would throw existing businesses out of compliance. And we need that data before we can take this conversation any further, is my opinion.
Right. Well, here, here's, here's something that I have. Uh, it's, it's, uh, from the, uh, site plan review, the ZBA recommendations. And it says the existing parking spaces for both properties is thirty-nine. The Rheinbeck Savings Bank recently approved a parking plan, including the existing parking spaces for the Kurthoys is forty-seven parking spaces. The net gain for this proposed plan is two parking spaces for the both properties. And John Clark said, he spoke with the planning board, uh, consulting engineer, uh, Robert Fallon. And Mr. Fallon suggested that he would need more of a justification about size of the, uh, well, that has nothing to do, that's a storm, uh, stormwater, uh, catch basin. But we, I've been working on this and I've never been asked. I just did it from our project when we were trying to work with the savings bank and make the drive-through, a public drive-through to go to the municipal parking lot. By the way, which my grandfather and other merchants bought that property from a business owner and turned it into the parking lot that it is. Okay, but I've been working with, and nobody has asked me to sit in on any of the comprehensive meetings. I don't consider myself a person just sitting as a public, maybe person to make a recommendation. I consider myself someone that has been in the trenches since nineteen seventy-nine and not a board member has asked me to donate my time. I don't wanna get paid for it. I don't need to get paid for it, but I'm telling you, we need more volume. And when you say about taking away spaces, that, that's private property. Okay, they could just, they could just put tables on the sidewalk. Okay, and not even use those spaces.
Okay. Let me, let me, but, but let me, let me just, let me, Joe, 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 let me interrupt you there, two, two points. Uh, it may be private property, but what we need to know, and we don't know because it's unclear, just as we did with the prior thing, is which businesses are those spaces allocated to? And as far as your comments is that they could just put seats on the sidewalk, no, they can't. We had in the last two years, a global health crisis. Our trustees and our mayor pretty rapidly came up with a solution for all of the businesses. They worked with the businesses. They came up very quickly with a solution for outdoor dining. They put up concrete barriers on the street. They bent over backwards to help the businesses of this village. And I think they did a great job.
Oh.
But that crisis is past us. We are not in that crisis right now. So I don't want any of us to, to continue with the belief that just because we responded to a crisis that has now subsided, all the rules have changed. We're the planning board. The planning board has to honor the code. I know that the trustees and the mayor have been talking about options, but there has been no proposal yet for continuation of outdoor dining across the board in the village. And I think to, uh, try to take approaches, uh, piecemeal, one by one in kind of a stir until done process would be ineffective and ill-advised.
Well, I had four tables out in front of the Skemmy's building back in the eighties. Okay, our family-
Okay, well, this isn't the, Joe, this isn't the eighties, Joe. Codes have been passed, right, codes have been passed since the eighties, okay? And when a new code is passed, we're the planning board. We don't make the code. We don't make the laws. We don't legislate. Right? But when they pass a code, we are bound to honor it and, and, and enforce it. There's a lot of things that have happened on this planning board that I disagreed with, but my role on the planning board is to honor the code. And if it's matched the code, I have to vote for it.
Me too, but how come I'm not questioned with what's getting voted on? Why am I not-
Joe, you're welcome to go to any of those meetings and especially, and I've seen you at meetings.
I know.
But look, the trustees and the mayor, right, the trustee, it's not the responsibility of the trustees and the mayor to look around the town and say, hey, that guy is an, we have, we gotta get that guy. Right? It's the responsibility of the individual citizen, you included, to make your, uh, desires known, to make your points, to share your opinions. Right? It's not everyone's responsibility to go to you. You need to go to the trustees. You need to go to the mayor.
I have.
Yep. Can I just interject and just remind everyone that this is not a public hearing? This is a discussion-
I get that, Ryan, and I appreciate that. I'm sorry to waste your time.
And those involved with the Crowe and forty-one East, East Market Street. So, you know, if, if, if this is the platform we wanna go, I mean, the planning board has the discretion to schedule a public hearing if, if, if that is the direction where this conversation needs to go. So just, I just wanna make sure everyone's crystal clear that there can be no other comment from anybody else other than those involved with, with the Crowe or the planning board and its membership.
So Joe, am I, am I allowed to make a comment?
So you are, Joe, because you're a part of forty-one East, East Market Street. You, you are, but unfortunately, anyone else who's, you know, lis- listening in unfortunately cannot, uh, participate.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for putting us back on track there, uh, Ryan. We, I think we need to talk about what are the, what spots have been allocated to existing buildings, to existing businesses? Uh, do we have extra spots that can be removed from the parking to satisfy this? But, but my, my opinion once again is I don't think we should do piecemeal, stir until done, uh, answers business by business on, on outdoor seating.
Jeff, can I just ask, uh, two, two questions about what you just said? Uh, one, um, we were told that it is individual per site plan, so we, it's not a, it's not a, let's put everybody in the same pot and start up. As you mentioned, it is one particular site plan at a time. So that's why we were told to pay the fee and do the drawings and get our attorney and get an architect and all the stuff to put the seating up and get with the fire code and the zoning, which we've done. So I think it should be done one at a time. I'm, I'm not interjecting on Piper's, I think, and, and, and Laura's. They should, they should have to handle their business. So that's one thing. As it, as it applies to the parking spaces between the bank lot and Joe Kurthoys' nine or fourteen spots, whatever he said he has, there's not a, a number on that parking space that says it goes to suite one or suite five or apartment eleven or, you know, liquor store, whatever. They're just nine spots, eleven spots wherever they fall, okay? As far as I know, and I own both, two businesses in this plaza, so. Um, so, and then to get back to your comment on we're taking away parking, I understand that is the case, but if you tagged it onto what Joe said, we've got, you know, two years of now down. So for us to be able to try to keep our doors open, that's gonna require us to, to pivot and make an adjustment to our site plan to try to make up for lost revenue for, for any of those businesses, for every business. I'm sure that's why Laura's asking for more business, for more seats. And I see that there's people behind us on this docket that are gonna be asking for ten times what we're asking for, and I wish them luck. But back to what we're looking at is this drawing is, this is what we and the owners and the safety people think is capable and doable. We'll have barriers to protect people from backing into people the best we can. It's gonna come out of our pockets to borrow money to try to do this so we can try to make money and make it safe and make it enjoyable and make it quiet and, and all that. We've got zero complaints in the, you know, two plus years we've been here. We've got no noise orders. We've got no drugs. We've had no fights. You know, so we're a pretty darn good business and we're just trying to keep it going. And that's why-
We, we want that too, as I, as I said to Piper, we want the businesses to see. We just have to have, we can't, you know, just say, okay, you can have as many tables as you want. We don't care about the parking. We have to go by the law that's on the book.
I understand that and we're, 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 we understand that there is a in lieu of parking potential. We, 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 we got that when we opened. We got that two weeks ago and we know that now.
I need, I need a parking plan. I need to know how many spots Joe has that go with his building. How many businesses? We have some data. He probably has some data that can go over with the zoning enforcement. Justin was on, was on the call with us today and go over that and come to some kind of number, like, you know, uh-
I think they already did that and that's, I think they did that. And, and they were, they've just put themselves on mute because I couldn't hear, but they were to have done that. That's why we, that's what we did though over the last two weeks. Like, I don't really wanna wait much longer, like, like Laura.
Is Justin still there?
We're still here, Chair.
So Justin, what, did you meet with?
We met with Joe last Tuesday and we were asking for the, what was allocated to, um, what business? I guess my question is when the Crowe went in, were they, did they have to pay and park? Were, were they allocated at that time during their site plan?
We, yes, we, we were and we did, um, but that was for indoor.
Okay.
So now it's, you know, we understand there's a potential for, for a new parking in lieu of or, or some other, uh, I think one other spot in the back maybe now open because there's an empty tenant. I don't know what, that was what Joe was gonna find out, but as he said, there's, it, it was already done in his site plan. However, many spots are there would have to be looked up if he doesn't know off the top of his head.
Yeah. Uh, I was just reading it and it's, uh, uh, let's see, a motion made by Ja- James Davison, uh, seconded by Faith Campo to make a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for an area variance for nine parking spaces based on the justification that the overall improvement in excess and circulation will provide an equivalent number of spaces and benefit to the village. Uh, for a, uh, yea and zero nay and, uh, nay and zero abstained.
So you had to pay for those spots.
That, yeah, that was, that was for nine spaces that I paid. And then Keith paid for his internal spaces. And then Prime paid and Keith paid for Prime's internal spaces. So we probably have, I don't know what, uh, Keith paid.
So I like, so Joe, I'd like to clarify that from my recollection, um, I don't believe Prime paid because I don't believe Prime had any indoor seating.
Okay. All right, so then Crowe paid. Then. I'm not sure. I wasn't there. I wasn't involved in it. I'm just saying everyone's getting banged for an in lieu of fee of parking. And, and that's why I, I got a little crazy about, you know, in lieu of fee of parking and it's like a myth. And it's a, it's a, uh, I don't know, an oxymoron or whatever you wanna call it, because there is no parking. And I don't know what the money's gonna be spent on because we can't, we haven't bought a parking space since the eighties since we were talking about it. So I'm not too sure what the in lieu of fee of parking is.
Um, I'm not sure that that's accurate either. I, I know the village, um, parking lot has expanded. And that was after the eighties. I'm not sure if it was paid out of the parking in lieu of fee or not. Um, I think just to get off this, I think we do need a history of parking on the site. What's been paid, what hasn't, how many spaces are allocated for your property? Uh, there is a change in the law since the last time you came here on this property. Um, in terms of parking is that you cannot, um, you cannot, um, pay in lieu for more than fifty percent of the allocated parking. As I remember. To prevent just buying their way out of trouble. Uh, you have to provide at least fifty percent of your allocated parking. So I think we just need a clarification from you working with Ryan or whoever it is. Um, how many parking spaces are on the site that are under your control? How many are allocated for you? How many have been paid for in the past? And whether you can take two more parking spaces away by in lieu fee.
Okay.
And then the second thing I'll say is, is that sidewalk, even though it's on private property, is part of your approved site plan and has to be open to the public to provide access to the parking and to the stores. So we can't have, um, tables and blockages of that sidewalk because that's part of the pedestrian circulation system, even though it's on private property.
Right, I follow that, but I mean, nobody walks on the sidewalks in that parking lot. They cut across and be doing the cars all day long.
A lot of people use that sidewalk.
I, I understand that.
Certainly, but people do use that sidewalk as part of the-
Especially when it's raining.
And unless you can provide justification of another way of providing circulation to the site that's safe, then, uh, that sidewalk is gonna have to be maintained. In terms of the barriers, I believe the fire chief and police chief are correct that there has to be some sort of strong barrier there. I think, um, what's being provided, for instance, later on in the program, uh, at, um, at the site on Livingston Street, um, Terrapin, they're providing cement-based planters around their property. Um, if, if, uh, you can solve the parking issue, I think the only way that I would vote for having tables out into that parking lot is to have some sort of strong barrier so that, you know, uh, somebody backing up would hit that before they would hit somebody and, and sit it on the table.
Um, Ryan, could you put that photo back up? You know, I mean, we respectfully, this is what we did two weeks ago and we're sort of still in the same, you know, th- this is why we have Justin on the call and Joe, they talked about parking. I'm not sure what more answers as a tenant I can give you, but this whole fifty, whatever that is, is, is gonna, the other picture, Ryan, that has basically what's already approved at Gabby's would be that filled with concrete. That would be filled with concrete or at least some sort of stone or brick and then just gravel on top or, or dirt to put planters, flowers, and so it looks pretty. And then the bases would be those, you know, fifty-five gallon whiskey barrels also filled with mulch or rocks like we had last year. And, you know, if, if someone's backing out, they're, they're typically not going above about two miles an hour, you hope, and that, that should certainly suffice.
Yeah, I, I personally don't think that wood is a good idea because it, it'll be damaged too easily, but, um, um, certainly a planter of substantial weight is what would be needed in order to provide that barrier from the traveling.
Um, yeah, we actually proposed, we showed that last, I don't think you were on, John, maybe you were, but we had those last year and we put them in the picture last week or two weeks ago and we still have them. So we can certainly, um, reuse them and then, you know, make, listen, we're about safety too. We don't want anybody getting hurt. I got kids. I got, my mother still lives here, my brother, everybody, family. We don't want anybody getting hurt so that, wha- whatever we have to do to make it safe, um, and enjoyable is what we want. We don't want any issues. We don't want problems. We want, you know, so you see those barrels, that's, that's before we, that was the, the potential mock setup. They were actually filled with like eighty pounds of gravel and then mulch and flowers during the season.
Yeah, but they don't provide continuous safety. They provide spot safety, so somebody-
Well, we would line them up, um, uh, John, we would line them up along the, the, the barrier and with like a two-foot gap. So we would, that's just four. We've got like sixteen of them.
Right, if, if I could interrupt for a second, we, the thing that we need is the parking calculation. I need, I need, you know, you two guys to work with Ryan and Justin, figure out how many spots belong to the property, including the parking of Luafie. How many have been allocated to each of the businesses, what's left? And what we could do, whether this is doable, whether this is, um, needs parting in lieu of fees. Um, we, we need numbers and, and-
Well, I, I have nine. Keith, how many do you have for Crowe? Did you pay for?
Believe it was, we paid for two or four.
Okay.
We need it laid out on a piece of paper so that we, with, um, dates-
Well, I mean, who, who's responsible for that information?
Just remembering.
Who's responsible for that, maintaining that information?
I thought it was in the files.
Yeah, I don't have it with me, but I'm just, if it's on record, it would be in the office there, but.
Right.
I don't, you know, it's just two and a half years ago and how many meetings, so I don't recall off the top of my head, but.
But it should be in the approvals for the liquor store approvals for the, you know, the real estate office and so on. We should have, we should have this. But what we need to know, I don't know if we have that. And that is the actual number of spots that belong to you and the total number of parking lieu fees that were paid by you or your tenants in the past. So we can know the number we're working with.
How, how does that change this? If I've already paid for parking spots for inside, how does that change what I'm asking for? I'm not asking to change the inside. I'm asking to add outside. So whatever the new in lieu of fee is what we understand would be the only change.
If there's, if there's enough parking to make up for the parking spots you're taking away.
There's not enough parking in Ryback period, let alone one less spot.
I, I understand that.
I know it's a.
I, so I agree with you on the parking of Louis fee. And, and part of the comp plan committee is going to address parking and try to figure this out, but they're not gonna figure it out this week.
Well.
We have to figure out how we proceed with the current law.
Let me read the current law. Let me read the current law so people are clear because
Perfect.
This year, the, the fee in lieu of providing parking spaces shall only be implemented when all reasonable options are exhausted. And the number of spaces covered by the fee should not exceed 50% of the permitted minimum number of spaces as established by the planning board. So I think you can make the case, first of all, that you can eliminate two spaces if you only have three available because that would, that would broach the 50%. And we're charged with only doing it when all other reasonable options have been exhausted. And I'm not sure providing outdoor seating is a grounds for implementing in lieu fee. I don't think that was the intent. This law was changed, um, I don't know, probably five or six or eight years ago, um, to make it stricter so that in lieu fee couldn't just buy off parking spaces and leave no parking spaces left.
Oh, can, can you just clarify that for me? So let's just use a theoretical, let's say, you know, we have, uh, 10 parking spaces. And let's say with, uh, Keith, he's gonna have to do, let's see, he wants to put out, uh, 14 seats. Uh, so, uh, eight, eight seats is a thousand dollars. So that's 71 buck, 71 and change per seat. So he's, uh, he, he's gotta pay that fee, correct? So let, and what's that mean 50%? What, what was that added? I'm, I'm not following that 50% of the new law. What, what's that, John? Can you, can you explain that one to me?
An example would be a new restaurant goes in, they need 10 spaces. Uh, they only have room for five. They can pay for five and that's 50% up to 50% can be paid for, but they can't pay for six and only provide four.
Right. Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha.
In your case, I, I, this was before that law, you paid for more than your 50% share because you were doing good things in terms of overall parking count and connection to the village lot.
Right. I'm glad someone's still on the board that remembers that.
I'm not sure that we have the right to do more than 50% of your allocated parking spaces. Number one, and number two, it could be argued by reading this that we can't take away parking unless there is no other option. When all other reasonable options are exhausted.
Yeah, I don't know what other options we would have, but what is the, um, if, if we've got allocated, let's say two spots, but we paid for four additional when we opened, how, how does that work?
I think that's a question for the zoning enforcement officer.
Cause the, the number that reminds me was $4,000. So I don't know if that's four spots in lieu of, is that math right?
Yes.
Yeah. So that means if, if, if my memory is right and it's, it sucks, it was $4,000.
But we're ju- we're just talking about numbers. We need that, that, uh, Joe and Keith get together with Justin and Ryan and the roses at the planning board over as I could view through this research and come up with a map and a calculation of the number of businesses, each business in the parking lot, what their addresses, how many spots were allocated to them? How many parking in lieu fees they paid in the past? How much parking in lieu of like the 9,000 you paid originally? And how many spots do you own? So we can actually do this calculation and figure it out. We're, we're just throwing numbers out and we can't make a decision until we have some, a actual chart like we asked for, uh, uh, Piper to come up. But this is what we need.
David, may I ask a question? Um, based on that, um, is it true that the parking is only, uh, you know, geared towards places that people stay more than five minutes? Like if you're a, um, like the T-shirt shop that was next to us. Does she have to, would she have had paid or the real estate or CVS or is it only bars and restaurants and places that people sit at longer?
Yes, the, the, if you have a, a business, it's totally different. It's based on square footage. It's not based on, or, um, based on the number of seats because people go in and they buy some toothpaste at CVS that they go into the liquor store and buy a bottle of wine. They don't sit for two hours.
Right. Well, so.
That's, that's what the law was written for.
Yeah, no, I understand. That's some of my, my, my point about bringing that up is the real, so if the real estate has four spots, they don't actually need four spots because people don't sit there or the liquor store doesn't need it or so if there's, they've got nine spots, technically, other than the tenants, uh, the, the, the sleeping tenants, the residents, the, the two of those businesses don't need parking spaces.
No, under the code, they do need parking spaces.
If, if they're a liquor store, you just said they don't need parking spaces.
No, they, every use is allocated a certain type, a number of spaces in the code.
Okay.
Um, some of them are grandfathered because they've been there from before the code was written. But any new business that comes in has to meet their parking requirement or come up with a, um, parking in Lufy if they can, if they can't.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
So. And David, one other, one other question. So we're, we're sort of back going backwards, it seems to, to me. Um, so nothing can be done between now and two weeks, you know, again, for us because we don't have parking numbers. Is that correct?
We've got to get these parking numbers. You've got to meet with Justin, Ryan, Joe and come up with these numbers.
Well, they did that and I just don't understand why we don't have that information. They did it a week ago.
Is that true? Justin and Ryan, you have a document that lists these out that, that's confirmed numbers and spaces allocated for business?
That's a, a negative. Um, uh, we met with Joe, uh, we, we provided all of the planning and zoning files that we had. We had a discussion with Joe. And, uh, I'm not gonna speak for Justin. I'm gonna let Justin, uh, provide any input he wishes, but I can only comment on how, uh, both parties exited the discussion and that was Joe was gonna provide a parking diagram of the, uh, spaces and was going to work with, um, the Krog in this case to, uh, get that breakdown. Um.
Yeah, no, I concur with what Ryan just said. We did not have an actual map with allocated spots at that meeting. We said that we needed that.
It's like we asked Piper, we need to have these numbers. We need to have the clarification of all the stores, all the spots allocated, all the parking in lieu of fees so we can figure this out.
Okay. So David, like, like Laura's situation, uh, other than the parking, which I understand is a a sort of a cloud-based, um, scratch your head, what does it go for? But the rest of the, the rest of the design and the ask, you know, I don't want to come back and we figure out the parking and then you say the barrier sucker, the tables are too many or whatever, and then I gotta wait another month. So, so like what we just did with Gigi's, can we sort of look at the plan, look at the seats and say, okay, well, this is good to go as long as the parking is situated or figured out?
I'm gonna interject another thing. Trustee Slaby a few weeks ago said that the state liquor authority has some kind of regulation where alcohol can't be trans ported across the public, um, sidewalk. I think we need to have them weigh on this, whether this, as part of the site plan is a public thoroughfare or it's private and it, it has no bearing on it. But I, I don't think we can just ignore the fact that, um.
We've done that. We've already, uh, applied through the SLA for the expansion and it's, it, they're okay with it as long as the, the village is okay with it.
Do we have something in writing on that?
I, I, if David, you're there, I think he's got that. But if not, we can get it for you.
I don't, I don't have that.
Not, not you, David. Sorry, David Stickel.
Oh, okay. You have to get that to Ryan.
Yep. And we did that last year with a temporary thing. We had to, even though it was waived, we still had the, have the SLA approve that.
I have a question. There was reference to you consulting the fire department, but I, I didn't get anything from the fire department. I just saw the letter from the police department.
I believe the chief Amy came by and looked at the cook, the, the setup and the striping and the road and all that stuff.
He looked at it, but he or she, did they issue a letter? Did they make a determination about whether it's okay to put tables in the fire lane?
Well, it's not actually a fire lane. That's actually what Joe chose to paint it is what I was told. He said it's, it's not a technical fire lane. It's there to prevent cars from being parking there.
Okay.
But to answer your question.
Wh- where is that? I'm sorry.
To answer your question Suzanne, that's a no. There's no formal letter from the fire chief. There's no, no, there's no.
Is that required though Suzanne? Is that required?
Sorry.
Is that required for this? I mean, I know he.
Well, it was discussed at the last meeting that we're going to consult with the fire department about whether the tables could be put in the fire lane. I mean, this is the first time I'm hearing that those striped markings are not actually a designated fire lane.
Well, it's definitely not a designated fire lane. That was on the original site plan because, uh, I don't know, a $400,000, uh, or a million dollar fire truck, I don't know what they cost, does not want to pull next to a burning building. We've had two smoke alarms go off and what they do is they stop in the right of way, which we provided for the village with the bank. Uh, the 20-foot access of a right of way. And that's where they stop and drive in is in the right of way. There is no fire lane.
And, and let me ask, let me ask Suzanne, those seats are actually outside of the fire lane as we, what, what, what's being labeled tonight as a fire lane, which is now realized it's not. If you look at that, there's actually some lines there off the sidewalk. It's not in that painted area. These, the drawing that I've supplied.
Right. And most of the tables seem to, that you propose are in the two parking spaces.
Correct. Not, not the quote unquote fire lane, even though it's on a fire lane, but it's fine.
Right. Okay. I mean, this is the first I'm hearing that it's.
That understood.
Fire lane.
Yep.
I'm, uh, I'm trying to figure out where we go from here. I really feel that we need these numbers. We, we need to have a, uh, so we could, we could move forward with this project. And I don't know how everybody else feels, but I really think that, uh, Justin and, uh, Ryan have to get together with Joe and Keith. And well, Joe especially, and just come up with the number of spots, parking in lieu of fee and figure it out. So we could figure out, allocate this.
And also what I'd like to interject is that every car that is parked on the farthest east side of that parking lot is in our common right of way with the bank. Just the tail ends of all those cars are what we turned over when we worked with John Clark and the, uh, Ryan Beck Savings Bank were now.
Joe, did you ever formalize a, uh, of an easement that you could park? You know, I mean, the bank closes three, four o'clock and the probe is open in the evening. Did you ever formalize with the bank that you would have permission to use those blue paintings?
You know, that's a great, that's a great idea. I, I never even thought of that. I will talk to, uh, Mike Quinn or, uh, I can't remember the other fella that's, uh, in charge of all the, uh, properties.
Because I, I spoke with, uh, Mike Frazier. I, I talk to Mike every day. Um, and if you remember when he was chair of the planning board in the nineties and around, and early 2000s. And he remembers a discussion when the whole parking lot was created, but he does not recall a formal agreement of any kind between you and Mike Quinn that would allow for overlapping parking or shared.
Okay.
You know, and I, I would, I, we can't like, uh, count in a site plan, somebody else's parking lot.
Right, right.
We, we did this a couple of years ago in Sunflower because Sunflower closed at five o'clock and the restaurant across the way opens at.
Great idea.
But the whole.
Thank you.
Property was owned by Maseh and he, you know, he could come to that agreement. You don't own the blue spots.
No, when it's a right of way, it's not a fee simple, simple property. It's a shared common property. Yeah. All right. I'll talk to, uh, Mike Quinn. Thank you.
Oh, please, guys, I, I need, we need to move on with other agenda items. We need to address this in two weeks. We need to get these numbers, calculations written down and then we can address this and resolve this.
Okay. So the three things I need to do, or actually four now, is, uh, what I paid for spaces by me, what belonged to me and how much the Krog paid for their spaces.
Right.
And, okay, and I'll talk to Mike Quinn. I do have a question. So this in lieu of a parking, i- is that, is that gonna be something that the village is looking for a parking? A lot. I mean, they could get more parking if they took that private parking off of, uh, what do you call it? Uh, Livingston Street. That would be very nice that you don't need a special permit for that. I don't know why that's there.
As I said, we're the planning board. We can't address issues like that. There is, you know, there's the business district was created to support the businesses, the on-street parking calculations. You know, I, I spoke to Tim about this the other day. The on-street parking calculations plus the village parking lot was added to the formula when this whole thing was come up with. So that there is only like, most real businesses have like two spots, if they're not restaurants because they realize that there's parking in the village parking lot and parking. You can't move into the, I, I don't know how that came about in Livingston, but you can't, if, you know, I'm a couple of blocks away and I want to throw a birthday party for my wife, I am allowed to park in front of my house. We can't start throwing the residential parking, uh, areas into the business district. We have to look at the business district and how it can, you know, we come with more spots or some resolution in it.
Right.
And I, and I think we all, I think we all agree, we have a big parking problem here. We don't have enough parking spaces, Joe says. And Joe, I would encourage you to talk to the mayor and the trustees about outdoor dining because that's what you're coming to propose and there is no code for outdoor dining. There was an emergency crisis reaction that our mayor and our trustees did a terrific job responding to.
Absolutely.
But that's over. Um, and now, you know, there are a lot of people that would like to have outdoor dining and some people that don't want to have outdoor dining, but, um, the trustees and the mayor, um, and I know they, I know it's a thorny issue and they're, they've been working on this, but we don't yet have any kind of experimental proposal from them. And, and that's really the proper place this would go. Um, if I have to say it again, I don't think it's the role of the planning board to make piecemeal legislation this way. You mentioned before that the planning board is job is to look at individual site plans on a one-by-one basis and you write there. That, that's correct. But it's correct in the sense that we make individual, um, findings on things like variances or things that have to do with existing code. We don't legislate new code. And outdoor dining is new code and this is not equivalent to what Gigi's is asking for because they have property that's off the right of way, that's off the sidewalks that you don't have to cross. It's a different case. And we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be faced with, you know, another five or 10 or 25 of these requests. If something coherent and comprehensive is not done, we need a comprehensive solution to this. And I think you need to be working with the trustees and the mayor on this.
Let's move on.
Yeah.
Um, I, I will say if in the chat section, you can read it, Tim Decker, who used to be on the planning board and the, and the village board said the parking live food did cover the covered, uh, the expansions of parking. So it's not true that the in lieu fee just sits there and doesn't do anything. So it doesn't do enough perhaps, but it, uh, has done something in the past. And I don't think everybody agrees that we need more parking in the village. We need better parking management in the village.
Yeah.
We'll find that out as part of the comprehensive plan review, what the, what the residents have to say about it.
I need a motion to hold this over to the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to hold it over to the next meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, Michael Gee?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Okay, we're gonna, uh, guys, I need everybody to pull together so we can have answers in two weeks and get this done some way.
Thank you.
Okay?
Right. All right.
The next item on the agenda, it was a big agenda tonight, is, uh, 47 South Street proposed window replacement alteration for all existing windows in the historic district overlay. Is the homeowner here?
Yes. Hello, everybody. Uh, this is Tom Purvis, the homeowner. I'm just coming on video.
Yes, hello everybody. Uh, this is Tom Purvis, the homeowner. I'm just coming on video.
Okay, so um, Ryan, do we have the plans for this? Which you could bring up, everyone can see.
Hold on.
So, so Tom, you're gonna change all the windows in, in the building?
Yeah, that's correct. So the plan is um, uh, and I think I sent through uh, photos of, of all sides of the house. We're not looking to, sorry, uh, what, what, yeah, here we go. Okay. So yeah, um, the plan guys is um, to, to not change obviously any of the dimensions or anything of the windows, but simply to um, put, put in play, um, I think it's 18, basically replace the existing windows uh, in, with wooden windows. Um, based off of the estimate that I, I think I sent through in terms of the, the, you know, it's wooden windows and I think uh, Hobson doors sent through like the specifics in terms of materials and so forth. Um, but yeah, simply put, there's 16 of the same size windows. Uh, one bigger window on the front of the, of the house. Uh, and then one small window up in the um, bathroom on the first floor. Um, so that's, that's the plan of action. And the rationale is honestly just, um, you know, to, 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 to get a bit more um, uh, you know, warmth and stuff in the houses. It's very old windows. Uh, some of them have even got cracks in the glass from, from when we purchased the house. And uh, we're just looking for better insulation and uh, you know, throughout the winter time, that's, that's the rationale for it.
But the windows you have are one over one. Picture.
Correct.
And you're going to change them to two over two?
Correct.
Are you changing the size of the window on the front porch?
No, that's exactly, it's literally um, and I'm, and apologies, the one on the right is just an illustration, but it, 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 this will literally just um, you know, replace the, the existing size that is in the photo of the front of the porch. So no, we're not changing any of the sizes of any of the windows.
Over two as well?
That one's three over three. Per the uh, per the, I think there's a, yeah.
Anyone have any comments on the windows?
I think it actually, if they're two over two, it will be an improvement over one over one. Um, it would look more consistent with the historic age of the building. Uh, can I ask two questions? Um, these will be non-tinted windows?
Teaglass, yep.
And the number two is the vertical divider, the muntin in the window, is that gonna be exterior to the glass?
Uh, I believe so, yes, but I can confirm that. Um, I'm not sure if that, it's a good question. I'd have to confirm it um, per the quote.
Yeah, I couldn't tell from the, the specs, but the examples you showed show exterior um, muntins. And I know you can get those, but um, a lot of times they'll either want to put them only on the inside or in between the two glass panels. Uh, and to have an historic look, it really should be on the outside of, of the uh, of the glass.
Got it. Yeah, I cannot confirm that now, but I can, I'm trying to see if there's even the detail on the.
It says silver spacer, which generally means that it's between the glass, but I, I can't, you know, I.
Yeah, I don't mind. I think, I, I think that's the aesthetic we're looking for, but uh, I factually, I can't confirm that right now. Um, I'd have to, I'd have to find that out.
Well, any comments from the rest of the board? So um, can we proceed with this? Or we want confirmation that it's an exterior, it's that there'll be exterior and not interior to the thermal pane?
And, and Tom, you're, you're saying that was your intention to have the exterior month of this?
Yeah. I was gonna say, I would hope that's the fact. I'm sorry, I'm just, that's my oversight. Uh, I'm just not thinking uh, 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 of, of that fact right now. But yeah, I'm pretty sure that, that, that's how I would have wanted it. So I'm, I'm hoping that that is the case.
I think we could go ahead and vote to approve with an exterior muntin. And if he um, decides that he can't do that, and then he'll have to come back. How's that?
I think that makes a lot of sense. I agree with John.
Um, does that sound good?
Yep, that's good with me. I'll, I'll get those. Should I get that back to Ryan then? Just confirmation, is that?
Yes. So um, can I have a, a motion? With condition to uh, but 47 South Street window replacement?
I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of the windows with new conditions. One is that it doesn't change the size of the windows or disturb the proportions of the windows. Um, and uh, and two, that the um, the vertical muntins dividing the uh, the uh, sashes will be on the exterior of the glass so that it has a three-dimensional look from the outside.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, roll call vote Michael Gee.
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
Aye.
John Clark, aye, and David Miller, aye. Okay, well, good luck.
Great, thank you, the planning board. Have a good evening.
Okay, get back to it. Okay, number four is Victoria's back. It was an apartment, you changed it to a business and now you want to go back to an apartment.
Yeah, I'm back for the last time on this one. Uh, the actor's ready with a demolition permit to start the work as soon as you give the okay. So you'll recall, the second floor space of six, three, eight, four Mill Street LLC was formerly um, a commercial office space. And uh, the owner wanted to convert it to a residential apartment and you did approve that back in August of 2021, on August 17th. Um, we thought there was a commercial tenant at one point. But that fell through. And so the owner does want to proceed with um, the renovation and conversion to an apartment. And as I mentioned in my letter, it actually reduces the required parking by seven spaces. Um, it was a rather large office which required eight spots. Or eight, had eight spots allocated it to it in the neighboring lot. So this will open up some parking for other.
I have to thank you for doing the parking calculation for the parking lot with what stores had how many spots that it's, we have a copy of that now and that's been very helpful. And if we approve this tonight, we can certainly put the spots back into the calculation and we'll have a record of that. We need to have a record of every parking lot in the village so we can know. Um, we're not reinventing the wheel every time a business opens or closes. So does anyone have any questions about going back to a residential apartment?
I got a question, I got a question. What's the square footage?
It's huge.
Um, it's very big. I gave you the floor plans and I know Warren is on. Um, I can pull them up.
Three thousand seven hundred square feet.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay.
It's a big space.
It is a big space. Nice apartment.
Yeah, and it's got an elevator too.
Yeah, sure. You don't want to put two apartments up there?
Uh, I mean, we could do two apartments. The, the trouble is, um, and Warren can correct me if I'm wrong. There was an issue with coming up with the second egress for the, for a second apartment, because to be on the second floor, you have to have, um, you know, two ways out.
There's only one stair, yeah, okay.
It was problematic. Otherwise, they would have loved to have put two apartments.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to convert to residential.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Michael Gee seconds it. John Clark made the motion. Roll call vote Michael Gee.
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Susan Holzberg.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
Okay, good luck and thank you again for the map of the parking lot.
Thank you. And the, the, the part update that I did give you did account for this being converted back. It also accounted for the hub uh, being constructed. And so while I'm here, I just want to mention um, that we will be coming back to soon for an amendment to the hub project. Um, given, you know, the shortage of housing in the village, uh, the owner wants to change that project. The footprint and the exterior will remain the same, uh, but they want to change it from um, the hotel use to apartments so that they can provide.
Nine apartments in one building.
Right. It, it, it might be reduced a little bit, but because in order to make the apartments, you have to add the kitchenettes, so it, it does require um, some movement of the interior spaces. But the exterior will look like it, it does. And hopefully we've also solved the drainage problem. So we will be back to you soon with that submission.
Have you addressed the issue of two family houses and is it, this is gonna be rental, not, not like a condo?
No, not a condo. It's gonna be rental units.
But then it's more than two family. And it's the same problem.
Family uses are allowed in the business district.
In the businesses, okay.
Yeah, this isn't.
Okay.
Permit, but I think we're okay.
Alrighty.
Alright, thank you, everyone.
It's good to hear. Thank you, Victoria.
Okay, so the next item uh, is 37 Livingston Street. Again, uh, window replacement. And uh, I believe this had something else in it.
The front door chair.
The front door, yes. You want to change the front door. And I gave the historic register of documents to everybody. Um, but there were giant hedges covering the entire front of the building. You can't really see what it looked like in 1979. Um, so is it, you want to change windows or just what, who is the uh, Martin and Linda Phillips?
Yeah, I want to change thirteen windows. Um, basically the same look. White wood. Well, the windows will be aluminum, wooden windows with aluminum clad. Um, as per the specs that are included in the paper from Hobson.
These are six over six.
Yeah.
And you're going to put six over six in the whole building?
Yes.
Uh, the trees are gone from this picture.
Yeah, this picture's from uh, last month.
And what about the door? The door, car door has glass in it, is that?
It's, it's an antique wooden door with glass, yeah.
But it's not original to the house. It was purchased up in Maine.
Closer, do you have a closer picture of the doors, both the existing and the replacement? It's hard to tell from this shot.
Uh, not provided.
Brian? Whoever's doing this?
Hold on. Is that better?
There are, there are close-ups in the Word document, but they're kind of obscured by a uh, screen door.
They, the close-ups are um, the, in nine, in 2012, there was a white door on, on, on there. I put the, I put that in to show that there was a precedent for there being a white door. The, we're sort of, we're removing the door that's there now and returning it to what it was in 2012.
Oh, the, the current pitch has two over two and you're gonna make six over six to match the rest of the building?
Yes.
And these have exterior millions on them or?
I can't answer that. I believe so, but I, as, as with Tom Purvis, I, I don't know.
Okay.
So explain the door again. This uh, one with the oval is not, was put on by you or somebody recently?
Yeah, well, in the last, well, since 2012, that's all I really know.
Alright, so it's not original to the house?
No, that's exactly right.
And show us the door you want to put on.
Um, well.
And you scroll over there?
It's just a mock-up. It's something to that effect. I, I took a door out of a catalog and pasted it in there.
But that's the sort of door you want?
That's what we're going for. It would be wood.
Wood with six panes?
Yeah.
Not, I think it looks fine. Uh, again, I would, especially on the building in the historic district, I think we'd want exterior muntins uh, dividers on the windows.
Right.
Which you can get. It's, you know, it's just a matter of uh, ordering the right ones.
And it does look a lot better with the six over six on the first floor. So I assume the house was built around 1860, according to the historic district register. And so I'm sure it's had a lot of front doors in the last hundred and seventy-five years. But that door looks very nice to me. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the uh, site plan for 37 Livingston Street?
I'll make a motion uh, similar to the previous application for a similar thing. Uh, the two conditions that the window sizes don't change, they just replace existing. And that the muntins on the windows are exterior to the glass so that they have a three-dimensional feel from the outside. And that the door is similar to the one shown in the um, mock-up.
And it's a solid wood door.
Yeah. Solid wood panel door.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Michael Gee seconds. John Clark made the motion. Uh, roll call vote Michael Gee.
Aye.
Susan Holzberg.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
Uh, John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for restoring a historic building.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Terrapin. And I think we're gonna be back to parking again. Warren is here.
I am.
He is.
So you're all warmed up, having had two lengthy discussions about outdoor dining. Um, so we, we all kind of understand the parameters. Um, and there, there is a table uh, on the seat with the site plan showing the uh, the parking, both existing and proposed. Uh, we can walk through the um, the drawings that I submitted to the planning board and I'll explain what's going on there. Um, the original site plan for Terrapin was approved by the board in uh, 2002. So here we are 20 years later. And um, many, many things haven't changed, but other things have. Um, what I, I think is interesting is that um, in the discussions, uh, and this probably relates more to um, to Gigi's across the street because it's been there longer than the Krog and, and has a large outdoor dining area. Um, when I met with Ryan and Justin and Ken McLaughlin to discuss this before submitting it to the planning board, one of the observations that Ken McLaughlin made is that, and, and I think restaurateurs know this, is that people love outdoor dining when it's available. And very often, given the option of waiting for a table outdoors or eating right away indoors, they'll, they'll elect to wait and come back for a table outdoors. So uh, you know, again, it seems to me that when people add outdoor dining to uh, to a site, it doesn't increase their actual load of people dining at a given time by that total number of seats. Um, and I think that's recognized by the fact that outdoor dining has a different requirement for parking than does indoor dining. Um, the, it's not like if you add 20 or 30 outdoor seats, suddenly you're gonna have that many more people. You, yet it's an amenity you can offer to people when the weather is good. And, and when the weather is good means um, if it's raining, you know, you're not gonna want to eat outdoors unless there's pretty, pretty substantial cover. Uh, if there's lightning, you really shouldn't be eating outdoors regardless. Um, and it's, if it's very um, humid and buggy, you may not want to eat outdoors. So I think many of us have been at restaurants in the summer when we've considered whether it makes sense to eat indoors or outdoors, given the opportunity. And again, it's a nice amenity to have, but I, I would suggest to the board that you consider that simply adding outdoor seats does not mean that there are that many more people served at one time. It's an offering that, that uh, that um, people coming to the restaurant may enjoy considering, but um, you're not gonna double your capacity because frankly, your kitchen's not gonna have that additional capacity. Uh, your wait staff, you know, is gonna get slowed down. Um, and, and it can actually work against you if you have more seats filled than you. than you can, than you can, um you know, comfortably handle with your, with your staff and your kitchen. So it just suggests that hasn't been discussed yet this evening, and I do think it's a point worth considering. Um so having started with that preamble, the first drawing that I provided um to the planning board is the two thousand and two site plan, but noting changes to that plan since that time. Um and if if Ryan can um bring up that plan, I can just briefly summarize what those are.
Just give me two seconds to get into the file.
Warren, can you confirm, because my zoning map is not clear on this, is this in the um Village Center District or the SSO?
It is in, it is in both of them. It's a Village Center and a Special Sensitivity Overlay, and of course, the Historic District.
So it's in this Village Center Special Sensitivity Overlay Zone?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because I have two different zoning maps, and one shows it one way and one shows it the other way. So I wanted to just make sure, because it might make a difference in terms of at least that shed in the back corner.
Okay, yeah, I don't know. Uh in fact, the the um the Village Center District uh continues up past um Jeff Scale's Financial, uh Rachel Cavell and Norton Mackin, and I believe it includes a house next to that, um interestingly. Um and and as does the sensitive, Special Sensitivity Overlay, it's kind of an odd, an odd alignment, I think. But it it would make, it lines up with the um, I think the Church and Messiah property behind it. But at least that's my recollection, unless the map lines have changed sometime recently. Right, so this is the, essentially the two thousand and two site plan that um that Ryan's got up, but I thought there were some uh things I had marked on that that I'm not seeing on here. Um changes, changes to where things are, where dumpsters are, and things like that.
Hold on.
There is two files, one with that and one with this.
Okay.
Hold on.
Yeah, that's, that's the two thousand and two plan. You can see it has the planning board stamp on it. Uh but there's another one that that shows um basically existing conditions, what's changed since two thousand and two.
Oh, your set, Warren. I thought you were still on.
Yep.
CC set, okay.
Yeah, no, this is the one, this is the one the planning board approved in two thousand and two. And you see there was outdoor dining including at that time. Could you go to the first sheet in the set there, Ryan?
Is this the first one, or?
No, it's not, no.
Hold on, I have, I have multiple ones for me, Warren, so.
Okay, the the most recent date would be the the most current file, Ryan. Uh the dates included in the name of the file. Okay, thank you, that's it. Okay, so this is the two thousand and two site plan um as as prepared and approved by um by the planning board, prepared by CC, um and and if we can sort of hold it there for a second, um you can see that um out of the twenty-one parking spaces that were approved at the time, um that if you go there today, though, they aren't all available for parking. Um and and I don't know that this is all recent. Um there is, there are a couple of different um dumpsters. There is a um a large, basically a bin for grease, grease receptor from the kitchen. Um there is a uh a catering trailer, which um, you know, obviously Terrapin does a fair amount of catering, and they prepare the food in the kitchen, so they have to move it into a trailer there and take it to an off-site event. Um all of those things obviously weren't necessarily considered um back in two thousand and two uh by the applicants at the time, or 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 correct by the board. But um one of the goals of the revised site plan is to kind of clean up the site, um to to add some additional landscaping, to improve um the organization of the back of the site. I mean, things don't look at their best uh in the winter, um you know, coming into spring anyway. But um but, you know, to to add a uh shed to hide some of the things that are stored on the site, um to have an enclosure uh for um dumpsters and things like that are among the things that are proposed site plan, which I'll show you subsequently to this, um are attempting to address. Um so there, this, this was the approved site plan. It has some diagonal parking. It has a uh a loop arrangement where you come in at the east side, you loop around the back and come out the um the west side, which is not ideal, um but with with diagonal parking, you sort of have to do that, because people have to back out and proceed in one way. So one of the changes of the proposed site plan is to have ninety-degree parking, which actually um optimizes the 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 use of the space a little more. Um so we can, we can move on to that. But before we leave this site plan again, you'll see there's landscaping um that was installed um subsequent to the approval in two thousand and two. There is outdoor dining along Montgomery Street and wrapping into the original entrance there at the corner of Livingston and Montgomery. Um and then there's that, um Josh added a uh accessibility ramp and side door that will remain there along Livingston Street uh at the time to uh to accommodate the uh Americas Disability Act and so forth. Um one other thing, um you can see that I've noted on this plan is there's been a tent there um during the uh the pandemic. Um there's about a thirty by thirty tent uh that was used for outdoor dining um and for social distancing. Um so we are, we are proposing, so basically while that was there, there was no parking on that side of the parking lot anyway. Um the proposal for a new um outdoor dining pavilion will be roughly in the same area, but you'll see a little different configuration move slightly closer to the building, but um the reconfiguration of parking you know, addresses that location, but that's where the tent has been for the last year or two, while there's been outdoor dining, while indoor dining was basically um not being utilized at all. So Ryan, if you could go to the uh next sheet in this set. Um there's a table, which we can come back to shortly uh for calculations, but I think if you move down, you can see the proposed revised site plan. And maybe you want to zoom out a little bit, or uh just to show that. So the parking there, as you can see, is ninety degrees. There's one entrance and exit, the driveway is wide enough for that. Um and we've put, proposed putting enclosures in, fenced enclosures for dumpsters, um new storage shed and in the um back right corner, really the uh the northeast corner, um and another enclosure um by the side of the uh wash kitchen and wash station door there, just to kind of screen things that are on the site right now. There's some um, you know, outdoor propane light, uh heaters and lights. There's some chairs and folding chairs and tables, various other things. I'm just trying to organize this and and clean up uh a bit of what's on the site. The proposed outdoor dining pavilion is shown roughly where the previous temporary tent was. Um it's got, uh we're showing, um you know, seating for up to forty people with a um uh hostess station and then a a service area, um directly accessed from the kitchen of the of the back of the building. Um preserving, of course, handicap parking there, um preserving the access into the building through that um side ramp, although obviously outdoor dining is available too. Um I showed uh the existing um previously approved outdoor dining along Montgomery Street and at the corner of Livingston. So all the outdoor dining um is shown on one sheet here. Um and the uh, there are some other sheets that show utilities and proposed landscaping um to to protect um the outdoor diners from people, people that are, you know, maneuvering their cars. Um and unfortunately, we just talked about earlier, people do make mistakes and sometimes put their car in drive when they think it's in reverse. Um we have proposed concrete planters um that will also benefit from the weight of soil and and the plant material in them. Um I mean, nothing could prevent somebody going at a high speed um through one of these, but presumably in a parking lot, they're not going to be maneuvering at a particularly high speed. But um safety is a certainly a major concern for any outdoor dining. And so something um that that gives people an extra measure of protection and slow down a vehicle um is pretty critical. So we, we have these um in between the parking area um and the dining area, along with um planters at the um at the north and south ends, just to kind of complete the um the idea of putting up basically an outdoor pavilion with planting around it, sort of a a garden pavilion. And there's some images on the subsequent pages of um of of this proposed pavilion with plant material, just to give you a sense. The thought is that um this would extend the outdoor dining season um a little bit. Um you know, a little earlier in the spring, a little later in the fall. Um it would really couldn't practically be used in the winter, but um but the thought is that we would have a lattice screening around this, and then um toward the beginning and end of the season, have some uh inside, some sort of canvas curtains, which are shown in another rendering, so it would, would, you know, cut down um wind howling through there, uh kind of like was done at the side of um of cinnamon when it was still uh Ariel, although that seemed to become a more permanent structure. But but an outdoor dining area that um has a little more sense of enclosure and protection um from wind and rain, again, until until the season really is over. So that would be um the situation with with some canvas up to kind of uh provide some protection. It could even be canvas with clear plastic like many tents provide. Um but it would all be behind the lattice, so um to 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 try to keep the garden pavilion uh sense as uh as strong as possible, with again, plant, plant material in the planters on the three sides um around this, um just keeping an entrance from the street, and then of course, access from the kitchen. Uh but this is the uh the concept uh for for outdoor dining uh at Terrapin uh to replace the tent that was there, and um I'm happy to to, you know, address additional concerns that we haven't yet talked about. I did provide a tabulation of parking, um based on the um the approved seating, both um inside and outside. Uh we will, um a- as as now, we will, we will lose some seats um just because of the enclosure areas for dumpster and so forth. But um but, you know, compared to what was, what was originally approved, just the twenty-one, um we're looking to to drop the fifteen, and I realize that's certainly going to be a point of discussion with board.
Yes, what, what do we do with this, Warren? It says, you know, fifteen parking spots, and you need forty. So I, I'm kind of, I'd have lost the words. What do we do with this in lieu of our, our discussions so far this evening? And I understand your comments about if it's hot and humid and buggy, or too cold, or it's the winter. I, I think John Clark or someone told me that in the early days of this, outdoor dining was considered temporary and not part of the code. Then it was added to the one for, you know, one for eight seats uh later on. Um I, you know, as far as your comment, it probably makes perfect sense that out, you know, a hot, hot and humid, they're going to eat inside, uh beautiful and sunny, no one's going to be inside. But that's not the code. We've said that many times this evening, that we have to go with the code. The code has one for four inside, one for eight outside, which comes to, as you put in your chart, forty. So what do we do with this? I don't think that the owner wants to pay twenty-five thousand dollars in parking in lieu of fees.
Well, obviously, there's, there's no additional space on this property for parking. Um there were discussions, um Josh Croner tells me, when he first opened the restaurant with the Church and Messiah, they wanted a a monthly fee for um permitting parking there, which he wasn't um comfortable or able to provide. Um so there's no formal agreement, and they weren't, they're not prepared to write a letter saying, yes, your patrons can park here, even though uh obviously, they don't have services or even even other activities um in the parish hall um all the time. Um but but um it's, you know, the the comment was made earlier, a- and I understand it, on one hand, that we have a parking problem in the village, but I have said um before, and at the risk of, you know, sounding like a broken record, a a village that is hard to park in is a thriving village, and it means that people want to be here. They want to shop here, they want to dine here, they want to visit here. And um if you have lots of parking spaces available, that tells me that people aren't coming, and that's a problem. So to to be able to uh park a block away on Chestnut or or along Route Nine and walk, and we all know there's parking on both sides of Route Nine that frequently isn't used, because people are intimidated by parking, uh parallel parking with a a line of vehicles behind them, um getting in and out, and even though it's only posted thirty miles an hour, uh it feels uh like it's faster, except when people are stopped at the light. But um but there is parking available within a short walk of this and many other establishments in the village. Um and I think that um, I think that's a good thing. I, 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 I do not believe that we have a chronic parking problem here. Uh we all know, the locals know where we can park in lots and where we can't. Um but it's generally not more than a couple of minutes walk away, even if you have to park a little further than you'd like. Um so I, I, again, I I know people have different views on this, but I do not think this village has a parking problem that we um that it has to be addressed on a crisis level. I don't think that's the case.
Oh, uh comments from the board?
All right, uh I'll start out. Um the original plan in two thousand and two provided for twenty-one seats, of which he said the meeting before that he was going to give twenty-three. Well, then it obviously went to twenty-one. The six on the back line, they're there and they're striped, but they are taken up, not with customers or employees' cars, but dumpsters, uh catering trailers, and it's really unsightly. Um Warren's drawing is very nice. I, you know, my wife looked at it, and she said it's beautiful. But the reality is what there is, his plan says twenty-one seats, but the reality is there's fifteen. Now you're going to create another thing and add forty seats, and you're still fifteen seats or fifteen parking spaces. Um if you're supposed to have forty, and you're not even providing twenty, you're not meeting the fifty percent threshold, I believe.
I mean. I don't know. Um Jeff, John, Suzanne?
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with Michael on this. The, so in other words, what was approved and what they should have is twenty-one spaces. Um with the addition of this many seats, albeit outdoor speeds, their seats, they would have to add a bunch more. But instead of going, instead of increasing spaces, this proposal is decreasing spaces by considerable amount from what would be required according to the code. And with I, and and I would have to say, Warren, with all due respect, I, I don't agree that claiming that residential street parking is a good idea. I, I live a couple of blocks away from the center of town. I don't want to see people parking in front of my house, you know, loading, you know, it's, it's why on Livingston Street, I believe, those special permits were allowed for the, for the couple of people there, because they were under pressure from parking coming out of the central business district. So um and John feels differently. John doesn't think there's a parking space there, a problem. There are, you know, there's a lot of feelings about parking. Uh we're going to find out a lot more about it when the uh residents chime in on the survey and the questionnaire that's going out from the comprehensive plan. But I wouldn't uh offer residential parking as a compensation for decreasing the parking on on this place here.
John, Suzanne?
Um I have a question. This building will stay up year round, even if it's not used in the winter?
That, that would be the hope of the uh the owner, yeah.
Okay, um that does seem like a permanent. There are other options on the site for outdoor seating without taking parking. It may not get you all the seats you need, but it would give you more seats perhaps than you have now. Um I see you've added a couple of seats on the front recently. Um there's parking on the south, there, there's space on the south side of the building and wrapping around. Maybe you can make this parking lot a little more efficient by moving dumpsters and such around, so that, you know, in that area that's now handicap parking, you could put uh some expanded. It seems to be uh there's, there's no rationale for how we can continue to just take away parking or uh expanded seating. I, I wish it was, I wish it was so, but I, I'm, you know, and there's no way in it, in how I read the code that we could approve this uh because of that fifty percent threshold, number one. I do like um the idea of having a single entry. Um and um I think maybe you could make it more efficient by storing some of the junk that's in the back of the parking lot elsewhere. Um the shed, I don't think meets code, because in the Special Sensitivity Overlay Zone, you have to have ten-foot setbacks, which is, that's how I read the code. You could confirm that with uh the zoning enforcement officer, but um because this isn't in the Village Center District, it's in the Village Center Special Sensitivity Overlay, you're abided by the residential setbacks. Um so I'm not sure that that existing shed is under a hundred and forty-four feet. It can go to five feet, but if it's two hundred square feet, then it has to be ten by ten feet from both property lines, is the way I read the code, but um. So I, I, I wonder, can you scan over towards um the area where the, the? So I I I wonder, can you scan over towards the area where the the outdoor seating is going to be?
What was that, John? I'm sorry.
Can you scan over to where the outdoor seating is going to be, that corner of the building?
This corner, John, or the?
That's good. That's good. You know, I like the looks of it. If you can solve the parking problem, that's, that would be fine with me, but is there another location where you could put the the handicap access that you could extend the the outdoor dining on the south side of the building? Maybe you can only lose one or two spaces by extending it around the back, but not such a large area. There's also, I have always, there there used to be a hydrant right on the street in front of the building there. It's been moved over to close to the corner, so you could put two on-street parking spaces there and not not run into problem with the hydrant, I believe. So that could sort of give you a couple net gain spaces on the street.
Never counted on on street parking in the parking calculation.
No, I'm not saying that. It would be, you know, a a argument for a net gain of parking spaces that you might be able to use, say, in a zoning variance or some other means of of providing for less than required parking.
I I I don't know. I I agree with a a lot of the board members. I don't see how we move forward with this. What do we do?
The other thing is that the the church was in here not long ago and saying, hell, strapped they were for money and everything. They have a parking space over there that you could put two rows of parking in. It's wide enough. They only have one now. You could put two rows in, double the size of that parking lot and lease it from them for after hours. And that would, I think there's a provision in the code in which you can lease adjacent parking spaces and count that for your code. I I would re re establish contact with the church and say, you know, come up with a reasonable deal with them and and that you could get adequate parking right next to your building.
Where's where? Once again, it's like a broken record tonight. We're stuck on the parking. And, you know, even if you could, you know, come up with some more spots to make it twenty, you'd still have to come up with twenty thousand dollars in parking, which is an insane amount of money. You know, I don't know. We need, we need, we need a solution. I don't think, I mean, people, no one's made a comment that this is a historic building. It's the former Baptist church, and we're making a major modification to it. Does anybody have any problem with the outdoor dining pavilion? And it's it's the back, but it's a corner property, so it's viewable more than someone's backyard would be. Does anyone have any problem with adding this to the back of the historic building? I take that as a no.
I'd like to remind the board that you guys have the option and the discretion of scheduling a site visit. You have the option and the discretion of scheduling a public hearing. So you have these options, and it's not necessary for the board to rush into a decision tonight.
Oh, I understand that, Ryan.
So.
And thank you for that, but 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 we're stuck on, as John Clark said, we're stuck on on the law. We're stuck on the code here. Even if coming up with at least five more spots, and then if if Josh was willing to pay twenty thousand dollars in parking and lieu fee to make this happen, this is parking code again is is a is a difficult thing. We can't change the law.
I think that I I I think the thing that occurs to me is that this is a pretty, this is a very large project here, adding twenty five seats to an existing restaurant. And we have several restaurants that don't have twenty five seats, let alone adding twenty five. And I think John made some good suggestions about considering, just kind of reconsidering the layout of that land in the diagram that Ryan's just slid down on. We we know that they they added a bunch of seating in the front, and we see that in the lower left corner. But is there an option to put smaller, you know, two, two-person tables along Livingston Street there toward the back? I do see that there's a door there, but there are some space. It would not be in the sidewalk. Is there another option to diminish the size of the addition so that there could again be some additional tables, but maybe not as many? The idea of talking to the church is pretty clever, I think, pretty inventive, and I I would encourage that, too. But, you know, to to seems like a nonstarter as proposed because not only is it not expanding the number of spaces available for that large an addition, it's actually decreasing the spaces that are already there. So kind of a bridge too far for me.
I interesting that the idea of adding seats along Livingston Street, I mean, that would still be additional seats. So it doesn't really solve the parking problem unless we're adding less seats.
No, no, I mean, yeah, but I mean by that, instead of this giant permanent addition, although it's considered to be outdoors, it's not a tent that comes up and goes down, which was one of the first questions John asked. It's it's pretty much a permanent addition. Instead of something that massive, consider maybe adding fewer tables, but repositioning where those tables could be. And maybe just having a a tent that goes up and down for a couple of months off the back and and which would allow perhaps more parking if that if that could be reconfigured. Just looking for other options.
You're worrying. The problem for all of us is it is the code. And and we're stuck on these forty parking spots. You have to try to help us out here and think of something. Talk talk to Reverend McCann, try to see if we can negotiate something.
Warren, was this, when it was originally, the original site plan was approved for twenty one spaces, was there a variance or any other?
Yeah, that's a good question. Ryan provided to me, and I guess to you, the meeting minutes from three subsequent planning board meetings in late two thousand two. And I don't, I didn't see anything that jumped out about the parking. It's just that there was an agreement ultimately to provide twenty one spaces per the site plan. And I don't know if there were calculations based on the, you know, number of seats indoor and outdoor. I don't know, Ryan, if you can shed any further light on that, but I didn't see anything that explained how the number twenty one was arrived at at that time.
I did not find any source either, Warren. I only have access to the minutes based on, you know, what is existing in Terrapin's file here. And there was no inclination or suggestion that they had to go to the zoning board of of appeals. There was no variance application present.
I mean, even if a ZBA appeal was made to like exempt five spots, you could have twenty real and twenty fake ones, you still have to pay twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I understand.
And, you know, as I said, you know, the parking lieu fee, it just, it just punishes the businesses and doesn't generate new spots.
Right.
Well, you can't say that entirely. It has generated, not commensurate with the need, but there have been new spots created out of that fund.
Well, all I know is when Market Street opened, there were no spots. And Luciana had to pay eight thousand dollars in parking lieu fee. We were going to make Howard Jacobs pay sixteen thousand dollars until he made some agreement with Master Acevito, which got messed up when the building was sold. But we're punishing businesses when they open by asking them to pay thousands of dollars in these fees that do not help the village in any way. I don't think you're ever going to get a million or two million dollars you need to dig out the village parking lot and build an underground level down there or or buy some land in this village with the way things are today for a parking lot. I don't know. I I I agree with Jeff. I don't know. I don't, I'm stuck.
Church is the best option that I see. They are, they came to us and said that they are really tight on funds. So why wouldn't they accept money to these parking spaces on their property next door? And there is a provision in the code that says available video off-site controlled by the applicant are available on a shared use basis provided that the applicant dedicates neededly. So it seems it's plausible that that could work.
Right. I I can certainly encourage Josh to, you know, have a further conversation or an updated conversation with the Church of Messiah based on this information. And and frankly, I think all I can ask you to do, I mean, I heard Ryan's suggestion about a site visit, and that would be fine in public hearing. But maybe the the appropriate thing to ask you to do would be to table this application for the time being and for me to reconnoiter with the applicant who is out of town, not able to be at the meeting tonight, and discuss the concerns that that we have gone over because I don't think we can reach a resolution this evening and then come back to you when we're ready with some some revised proposals or amended proposals.
That's the only thing that makes sense. I would also consider the hours that the each of the two restaurants in there are open. You know, something like the Petit Bistro is only open for dinner. You know, someone, the Bia is only open for dinner on Garden Street. Are they open for lunch and dinner in both restaurants? What are the hours of Shear Cleaners? If Shear Cleaners closes at five o'clock and they're part of that, you know, parking lot? I don't know. You've got, you've got to do some homework, and I agree. I think I think we need to table this for now. Thank you, Warren. Some time to try to think of something. Any other comments?
I I would sit on the parking. The question is asked how it came up with. It was Marco Polo's, which was a restaurant, and that that wasn't out of business too long. So my guess is whatever Marco Polo and I think there was even a restaurant before them, whatever the parking going back to eighties, determine what it was that they had, maybe. I don't know. I'm just taking a guess.
I think that may be true, Michael, that it was based on what the previous restaurant it had.
Yeah.
So you might have a discussion with the zoning enforcement officer about what the required parking would be since you have an approved site plan for twenty one spaces. Would it only be that the outdoor dining would add on to that? Or do you have to go back to the original and count kind of all over because you're having this one component? So it might, it might be that the required parking will only be twenty one plus four, whatever it is. But I don't know. It sort of depends on the history of the site and how they, how the change in code has been interpreted. Because there were changes, outdoor dining didn't used to count. And then it was changed somewhere along the line. I can't remember the date, but it was, you know, probably less than ten years ago.
Yeah, I think that's true.
Thank, that's a great suggestion, John. All right, then, do I have a motion to postpone this to the next meeting? I'll make the motion to postpone it to the next meeting. Do it. Do we have? Michael won. It's like hit the buzzer first. Vote, vote, Michael Gee.
Hi.
David Miller, aye. Susan Holsberg.
Suzanne, aye.
Sorry. I'm getting tired. Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
Okay, all right.
All right, thanks for your time.
I I hope you can come up with something because I think it's a great idea.
So Warren, just follow up with me tomorrow about scheduling, and then we'll we'll go from there.
Yes, Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Warren.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
The next one, and we have the plans is actually two items, seven and eight for the the Star Building. And we we hi, Zachary, welcome. We thank you for paving the parking lot and strifting it and producing a parking map of the parking lot and what businesses are associated with it.
You're welcome.
That's terrific. I I guess I had my understanding, I'll let you present if people want to look at it to re to reuse the building, which has been vacant for quite a while. Ryan, do we have, you have the plans for this?
I wasn't sure if Zach or Owen was going to queue the presentation or if or if they wanted me to.
Well, you guys have it or or we could just talk about it.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, I can share my screen if that if that's all right with you, right?
That's fine. Is this Owen?
Uh, this is Zach, sorry.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay. Can y'all see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Excellent. Okay, so what we have here is what used to be the Terrapin Restaurant that took up the basement of the Star Building. It also took up the in the first floor was shared with the 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 realist, the, excuse me, the the theater. So here in this, this, this hash places the theater, and so let me see if I can draw here. Excellent. This is where we are proposing, maybe something more than gray. This is we're proposing a real estate office, which I believe is the first item on the docket. The second item is the restaurant, which we are proposing to take up what used to be the Liberty Bar, the Liberty Kitchen, the service hall, and the outdoor, the outdoor seating that Liberty enjoyed in the in the village. So essentially, what we're doing is taking away what used to be the dining room and making that a real estate office. The basement is still unoccupied. Though we, yeah, it's 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 unoccupied at this point and not and not part of this presentation. So that's, and then I can kind of recap the businesses that are in this space right now. So we have, we have basement unoccupied. First floor, we would have the restaurant. We would have the real estate office, and we'd have the theater. The second floor is currently occupied by Hundred Mile as a as a retail establishment that takes up basically this portion of the of the building. So that's the proposal, and I'm here to answer any questions.
So a question that had come up is what about the Upstate Theater? The parking calculations are fine for the building, but there's no mention of the theater, which has something like two hundred seats in it. So I I started to do some research. I spoke with Mike Frazier, who is, again, a retired chair of the planning board and also my colleague at the Historical Society and the Village Historian. We had some discussions back and forth. He shared with me some research he'd done for the mayor, which I shared with the board. And I think, in my opinion, I'm only one of five people. The zoning code went into effect in nineteen fifty four. The Star Institute was sort of converted out of being the library in nineteen seventy two, when the movie theater was created. They filled in the swimming pool, the basketball courts, the bowling alley in the basement. I have pictures of all of that, and they moved the library up the hill. So Mike Frazier said there was no mention of parking in all the businesses that opened in the eighties and nineties and early two thousands that he dealt with on the planning board. No one ever talked about the the theater, which has been there for over fifty years. So because of that, I'm, I, I, there may not have been parking mentioned in the original creation of the zoning code in nineteen fifty four. And no one mentioned it when the star, nothing was done for the Star Theater when it was built fifty years ago. So in my opinion, this should be grandfathered and not part of the calculation of this building, but I'm only one person. Um, this should be grandfathered and not part of the calculation of this building, but I'm only one person.
I, I'll jump in and kind of agree with that, but I think the um. The Star Theater or whatever it was called goes a lot further back than seventy two because I saw a movie there in sixty eight. And I had a discussion with Wayne Reifenberg about um, he was called carpot and told to get to the end of the line when he was going to a movie. Over there when he was a kid and he's my age, so. Wouldn't surprise me if that was a theater from the fifties.
It could. I do not know the date that the swimming pool was filled in, the basketball court was eliminated and so on. But the theater has been there for over fifty years.
You're saying you were born before sixty eight, Michael?
Yes.
Okay. I, I also.
You're, you're on mute. Jeff, you pushed your button.
My, my thumb got on it. I, I also tend to agree with Michael uh and, and David. That uh, I think we have a grandfathered situation there uh on the theater and I like the idea. The, the, the work, the work you're showing us here on the parking spaces and the allocation and the design. For the space in the Star Building uh is pretty comprehensive. Thank you for that. Have, is there a? Um. Is there a listing of, of which spaces were allocated or counted for, you know, each of the businesses like? You know, Hundred Mile and uh.
It's on the chart.
It's on the chart. Can you make that a little bit bigger, please?
Yeah. Second.
Ah, there we go. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, five hundred square feet. Yeah, cause that's the, that matches the code in our section one twenty dash sixteen for retail. And service.
And Jeff, you can see the real, again, restaurants are the problem. That the real estate office is about the exact same size as the restaurant inside. And it's two spaces versus five spaces and six more for outside. But, and Hundred Mile, which is seven hundred and fifty square feet, even bigger than those. Only use three spaces. And that's the problem, which, you know, our problem in the village right now is restaurants.
Yeah. And I see that you've accounted for them there as, as effectively as you've done everything else. Thank you for that, Zachary.
What about the basement?
Thank you.
Is unoccupied? How does that fit calculations?
That's a problem. If they want to.
It is. Um, to be, you know, transparent, we've been looking at um. Uh, certain uh low impact uses down there. Um, I think we may all agree that, that Liberty's basement was um. Questionable. So I think that we were looking for a um, maybe a tenant that, that had um. Possibly antiques or, you know, some kind of, some kind of retail use where we could utilize that, that, that basement space um. Effectively. Um, we are looking for a tenant and um, that will be um. An issue as you, as you bring up. I, I quite, don't quite know how to deal with it at this point, but um. That's where we are.
But is the bowling alley still down there?
It's a, it's, it's good. It looks like a bowling alley. Sure, sure. I haven't seen any uh, any pants or bowling balls, but sure.
So I, 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 I think unless somebody has any other questions, I think we're okay with this as far as parking. And we have to address this, the businesses one at a time because the real estate office is okay. The restaurant's gonna require a public hearing at the next meeting.
Um. I would like to hope that um, this was previously a restaurant. Um, and it has been downscaled in terms of parking requirements because the real estate agent. Office has replaced some of the restaurant, which has a higher parking demand. Um, are we allowed? That's the question that I have for the zoning enforcement officer to. Uh, say that this is less parking required than the previous use. Uh, which had an approved site plan. Uh, and so therefore we could park, we could pass it with, without. Satisfying, say, all the parking required for the basement or whatever else. I mean, uh, it seems reasonable to me, but I'm not sure that we have the right to do that. To say, well, restaurant for restaurant, this was approved with so many spaces and now they have less parking required. And so we could approve it um now based on its previous use, which had an approved site plan. I don't know if we have the right to do that because the part of the, because the zoning changed somewhere along the line between the last use and this use. So that's an open question. The other thing I want to bring up is I'm glad to see the parking lot paved. I think that's terrific. There's two things that I still need. Uh, if we're gonna do a site plan approval on this property, at least for the restaurant, uh, the higher parking demand is that. Uh, the handicap space would have to be actually striped rather than just shown. Uh, you know, you have to have an eight foot space with an eight foot striped area for unloading and loading. Uh, so that would have to be striped on the plan. And I want to see a sidewalk along the rear um. Garden Street area, not just asphalt out to the road with big concrete blocks. I remember when Stark first came in for their restoration, we said if you ever get around to painting that lot, we want a sidewalk there. And it got paved, but now it's almost as ugly as the gravel lot because of the way that the edge was treated. There is a sidewalk to the north and eventually I hope to have a sidewalk to the south so that we can link up with one near Market Street. And we could have a sidewalk on both sides of the street. And we also talked about landscaping buffer so that that space back there didn't look just like a sea of asphalt from Garden Street. So all those things I want to bring up now, since we're, we're gonna have a public hearing on the restaurant. I'm willing to move forward on the real estate office because I think that's a minor component, but uh. Uh. Those are my thoughts on the rear parking.
Would you like me to uh, to address these, David?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks. Um, so, so absolutely with the um, the striping, um, we're a hundred percent there. Um, let me talk to the owner about the uh, about the southern um access and the landscaping and we will have uh. Um, either a presentation or, or something else on the um, on the next meetings. Does that um, is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair. I, I would just like to see that whole um, west entrance cleaned up, meaning a designated driveway. So it's not a completely wide asphalt area that anybody can pull in anywhere. Um, some sort of landscaping buffer along the north and south. Parking spaces and a sidewalk along the frontage that matches, matches up with um Montgomery Road two.
And I would point out that somewhere between eleven and thirteen uh, those numbers of the parking space, there's a big walnut tree back there. And it's great except for October and November when you get softballs. Coming down on your car. No, I mean, I had walnut trees and it's, it's like, it's a liability and I.
You got one at the office. We, it looks like we, we have a hailstorm all the time. Yeah, I'm with you.
Alright, so the first thing I would need is a motion to um approve. Is there, is there a separate a, a dress or it's just the one address to the real estate office? That'd be the same address?
Same address, but separate application, Chair.
So it's the same address. We're not gonna say, you know, suite one or two or, or the north or the south. Um, uh, office. Alright, then can I have a motion to approve? The real estate office on the south side of the building for sixty four fifteen dash sixty four seventeen Montgomery Street. Anybody there? Okay, John makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Michael seconds it. Uh. So uh, roll call vote Suzanne.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
Uh, I thought we needed a uh, a public hearing for offices. That's not true.
We need a public hearing for the restaurant.
Yeah. I guess it's service business and real estate is considered retail. Uh, I, from the allowable use chart, John, I believe real estate office is under professional office, which is a permitted use. Okay. I just wanted to make sure about that before we finalize the vote.
They, I think David Miller, I. So it's five to nothing. But, and, and we'll see you next week to talk about the restaurant. So I need a motion. To. Have a public hearing at the next meeting. Um.
I'll make the motion to have a public hearing at the next meeting for the restaurant.
Suzanne, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Uh, John Clark.
Hi.
Suzanne.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
David, hi. Okay, we'll see you guys in two weeks for that. And hopefully you can uh help us out with some of the suggestions that John Clark made.
One other question before you go. Is there gonna be seating on the north side of the building as well?
Yes, there is plan to have seating on the north side of the building, no further than. This point here. Uh, whoop, there's my uh. No further than uh, really this point. Yeah.
Can you, can you provide a, a sort of a seating layout for us so that we know, you know, what we're approving? If uh, for the public hearing?
Absolutely.
There's no table on the front either. So it would be very helpful.
I was gonna mention that to Zach before you left.
Right. I missed that. Thank you, John, for pointing that out. Okay.
Excellent. That's no problem. We'll address the striping, the sidewalk, the landscaping and the, the seating on the plan.
Great. Okay, that concludes the agenda. We now have a um. Discussion with Frank. About uh, another house on the historic register.
It's window week.
It's window week, yes. Well, this is like a, we have a, a, a show on uh HGTV called Tiny House.
Nice.
Well, this is it. This uh, yeah, this complies with, we can make it.
So this is bike qualified. It's very, it's a very cute house.
Very charming.
Summarizing it. Um. You sent us a summary of all the changes the other day after the plans were submitted, which is nice. So. This was a two family. You're putting it to a one family. Was built uh. Around nineteen hundred, they're guessing, circa nineteen hundred.
Yes.
Um. And so do we, you have, you have the pictures you could show us, Frank?
Yes. Can I share screen, Ryan?
Yeah.
Sure.
Because I think I'm gonna, I changed the order a little bit because I think it's a little bit more um.
Clear.
A little bit clearer. So can you see, let me scroll. Can you see the screen now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm here with my wife, Emma, by the way. So we're, she's also an architect and we work on, uh, we've been working on this together. So as you said, David, the house was built in nineteen hundred. I made a phone call to Mike Frazier as well to see if he had any data on the house. Uh, he did send us that, that, to that um. Historic photograph that you had in your hand now. Alright. As you know, as you mentioned, it was originally a single family house. Uh, and then it was purchased in the nineteen eighties by the previous owner, who's Marty Clark. Uh, and he converted it into a dual family. So part of what we're doing is restoring it to uh, its. Original historic character. In some ways, we're taking off some of the elements that were added. Uh, and it's currently, when we purchased it, it had a one apartment uh. On the second floor and one apartment on the ground floor, which is the reason why Marty added, added that wooden stair on the north facade. So those are, this, and the drawings that I'm showing you, the top drawings are always the existing conditions. And the bottoms are the changes we're proposing to the building. So the top left is the view of the existing front facade. It shows the stair which leads up along the north. And there's a deck which runs along the back. Um. There uh, the north facade is shown here and you're seeing that deck. Which is on the back, supported by wooden posts. Our intention is to remove that wooden stair, remove the wooden deck, remove the Bilco door, which can also be seen. Uh, which is on the back, can be seen partially in the north elevation. Um. And our intention for the front, and, and we'll explain this a little bit more. Right now, we're entering, let me change this sheet. Right now, currently, the plan at the top again is the existing conditions. So there's a concrete walk. And you enter to the uh, in the center of the building. There's about eight feet between our uh, south facade. And the building just uh, south of us, which is, is kind of interesting because it's almost like the Big Sister. It's very similar. Uh, in its layout, it's a little bit taller, it has a little bit higher windows. Uh, but this shared alleyway, especially in a building which is only fifteen feet wide. I think really it kind of make, sacrifices some of the use of the buildings. We're, we're thinking that the front will be a living area. There's a, we're, we actually found uh, within the framing, the original location of the stair was in the center on the north facade. And that's where we intend to reinstall the stair as well. But if you're entering in the center, precisely in the center, you're losing three feet for the stair. And you have to enter there and kind of the dining area becomes a big sacrifice. So our proposal is actually to put an entry on the front. We are within the front yard setbacks for the village. It's eleven feet, currently eleven feet nine inches from the sidewalk. Uh, edge to the building facade. So if we go back. Everything we're doing is using the existing windows with perhaps just one exception, uh, which is what we want to do on the rear. But talking about the front. You can compare, the top drawing shows this existing window and our intention is to put a front door there. And I have a more kind of dignified entry from the front. And in this drawing, what we're showing is the potential to maybe relocate that window to the center. Of the facade there and to maintain some kind of symmetry so that the. The bottom becomes three bays and there are two bay symmetrically located above. Um, and the ground floor is only about a foot above grade. So we really only need one step. Just a nice stone step, six, maybe a six inch bluestone step, three by three. And maybe just a minor projection to get a little bit, you know, maybe a foot off the facade to get some of the rainwater. Um. You know, off the door. Um. So again, we're using all the existing windows. We do want to take off the aluminum storm windows that are on all of those windows. Uh, eventually what we'd like to do is put on the traditional. Storm windows, the kind that are hung with wooden frame. Uh, everything is single glazed. We like the kind of tiny mountains and, you know, we're fine with all, some of it even has the old blown glass. But again, in terms of uh. You know, uh, thermal quality there, it just doesn't do it. So it's gonna, it's gonna have to have a storm window, but we're fine with putting a. The older storms on the outside. Looking at the north facade, you'll see in the drawing above how this window is actually, this was actually, Marty told us, this was actually an attic. At one point it had like three stories. Window is actually, this was actually, Marty told us, this was actually an attic at one point. It had like three stories back here. It's now kind of cathedral on the second floor, but that window is actually up within the rafters. I can show you a photograph now. Where it's actually. It's, it's, you know, uh, it's cut off, uh, so it's kind of stuck up within the rafters. So we want to lower that just about a foot. Any, any modifications we do to the facade would be matching. Or even replacing or taking from certain areas where things have been, where we have to take out siding. We would. Use that in place and to fit, to fix and patch. Other areas. In this case, it would be easier, it'd just be a matter of lowering, taking the siding boards from below and putting them above the window. The other window is the uh, lower one in the center here. And that is actually currently not even aligned with the other uh, older windows or. We're assuming they're older because we assume that this addition was put on the back. At a later date. We just want to raise that a foot so it's the, of the level of our kitchen counter. And so we would align. With the other windows adjacent in the uh, living room and where the uh, stair is now going to be located. So again, the photographs on the right show the. Main entry, the west facade and above the corner of the west and northern facade. The next uh, here, this plan is just trying to depict, you know, the elements in plan which have been taken off. I want to emphasize it. Right now, a schedule is, is pretty critical for us. We're living here on Livingston Street. Uh, we're renting this house, but the, the owner is gonna be moving in here shortly. So we're not presenting a whole site plan right now because our, our most urgent need is to. Just fix up this house to allow us to live in it and to turn it back into a one family dwelling. There are things that we want to do, obviously. To, you know, we'd like, we're talking about some fencing. We'd like to. Put a little patio in the back, there would be landscaping and, you know, a new walk which might even be bluestone to the front facade. But there are things which we haven't addressed or even presented tonight. Our real emphasis is on just the building envelope itself.
Discussion, Frank, you know, when you're not actually doing the site plan yet.
Right. But we haven't even proposed it, but just, you know, right there a reason because. We, what we'd like to see, if it's possible at the next meeting, to at least, you know, get approval for these uh, building envelope. Uh, items, modifications. The drawings again at the top show the existing condition. It shows on the left the rear uh, deck. And the Bilco door. Uh, and again, the, the, uh, so uh, the. Drawing adjacent to that, the stair which leads up and the um. And the deck on the rear. So if we go through the, the changes to the facade, basically it has to do with removing the door. Which is the current door to the ground floor. Unit. And replacing it with, with, with the window. What we did was take the window off the rear facade, which is identical to almost all of the other older windows. And we put it here. So basically, we've taken this window. And we've located it. Here, exactly where this. Entry door was located. On the south, on the, sorry, the east facade, which is actually the rear just faces our. Our yard, a very small rear yard. We wanted a pair of sliding glass doors to open up our kitchen to that yard and to allow outdoor dining. And we kind of symmetrically placed a trim element that kind of centered around the building and, and around the existing openings on the second floor. Photographs on the right show existing conditions. And now I'm just, one other thing, just as a. So can you see this? Um. This just shows the window of the high window which I spoke of, which is kind of sticking up between the rafters there. We just want to lower that.
We don't, well, I'm sorry, we don't see it.
Okay. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Alright, so this is just a detail from the inside, in, interior. Showing uh, that window which we want to lower. There are a few, you know, other things. Everything uh, we're gonna paint the building and anything we do to the siding would, to be uh. Repair it or, you know, if it has to be replaced, it would be uh. You know, the existing, same as, same as the existing. Uh, we'd like to take off those aluminum gutters, so square profile letters and put a half round. Galvanized uh. Gutters and downspouts. I think that's pretty much it. Is there anything you want to add, Emma?
I think, I think it is a tiny house, but it's very cute and I like uh, that you're bringing it back to life. Um, getting rid of that hideous staircase, the deck in the back and everything. Um, I like it. Do we have comments from the board?
I like it too. I think it's a big improvement on, on. Uh, this property and it's more appropriate to have a front door on the street and I would, we don't have a vision of the door, so. I would just say like the uh, other ones that we approved in the historic district, that it be a. Solid wood panel door that's historically appropriate, you know. But I like it. I, I, I would give approval tonight if they wanted to do it, but.
I know, I'm just saying, that's what I was commenting. We're only here for a discussion.
They didn't make the deadline, Chair.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So just to keep progress. And mo- and momentum, um, we added them as a discussion item and. And, you know, obviously it's. Positive feedback, so I, I, I think we can expect them on May third.
Okay, any, Jeff, Suzanne, any?
Go ahead, Suzanne.
Said it looks fine.
Yeah, yeah, I, I like the, uh, every time I go down that street, that house with no front door just really. Attracts my eye and it's just unsettling. So uh, I'm, I'm glad to see what you're doing and the fact that you're using and reusing, repurposing uh, the existing. Uh, materials, you know, take, taking, collaborate it, you might take off from some area, you restore to another. Um, reusing the existing windows, et cetera. So I look forward to the. Next session.
That bizarre window that stuck up into the roof, I.
Yeah.
I did that. So, so yes, please come back. Um, weeks and uh.
I mean, I mean. Chime in a little bit. Um, I, I also agree that putting a front door on it would make the building. It's interesting that the one next to it has a side porch and a side door. But there's not enough room to do the same sort of thing on, on this parcel. So I agree that a front door would make it um, better. The two things I would say is, uh, when you come, come with a detail of what sort of door you want to put on. So we know what we're approving. And secondly. If it was me, I would not do sliding glass door on the back. I'd do French doors or something with smaller panes so that it. Looks consistent with the house. It won't be seen from the street. And, you know, I'll probably go to approve it either way, but I would suggest that you think about that. Um, uh, French doors or some equivalent would work just as well in terms of kitchen light, but it would. Look like it fits within the house.
And we are considering several different options, um, so. Everything, you know, there were even French doors that. Bifolds that look like French doors, so there are things, there are options and. We, we were thinking of a three panel door because it had more of a vertical look to it and, and a little bit more. Similar proportions, so it's something, we're still. Trying to, you know, get a handle on the budget, who's gonna do this work, but um, so there are some.
And al- and also, um, when you come next time, uh. In terms of the appearance, in terms of the street appearance, I, I think you mentioned on the list of changes. Uh, that you planned a bluestone walk up to the front door.
I think that would be nice, yes.
Yeah, well, yeah, it would be nice if, if when you come back, you could just add to that some designation of. Of what you intend to do with the walk up to the door, what the steps might be like. And um, if you're doing, if anything needs to be done or you plan to do anything with the sidewalk.
Uh, we, we, I don't, I don't.
Is there a sidewalk?
There is a sidewalk. It's a concrete sidewalk. It's kind of very, uh, you know, and very. Materials, it's not totally consistent. Uh, and. I don't think that's something we can undertake right now, you know.
But it's a, it's safe and passable at this point. It goes over the driveway. Uh, it is a little mismatched in color, but it's not, it's not um. Dangerous in any way, so it's not like we could ask for repair or anything. It's fine for now. You want to do something in the future, that's great, but I, I agree with Jeff and if you're gonna put a front door, we, we would need on the site plan. Um, you know, the walkway shown to the front door and the steps.
Sure, yeah, there'll be one step in the walkway, yeah, we'll, we'll.
And if there's any hood or, or covering over the front door, show that.
Right, yeah, we'll give you more detail in, in all of that.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? And if not, we will see you guys in two weeks.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last item on, on this very long agenda was the minutes of. October fifth, we're slowly catching up. Um, I want to thank Suzanne and Jeff for. Your hard work and uh. Uh, editing the minutes and.
I, I, I don't think I saw, in, in fact, I, I, I know Ryan sent them out. I, I kind of skipped over the minutes of the fifth. I, I think I sent my comments on the minutes of the nineteenth. Is that correct, Ryan?
You did. I, I didn't want to point that out that you guys skipped over the fifth. As sort of a courtesy to the board. Um, but um. You know, uh, you're more than welcome to. Um, vote on the uh, nineteenth tonight and. Uh, vote on the fifth. Next in, in two weeks and at, at the May meeting. Uh, there are going to be more. Um, uh, Miranda right now is working on um, November. Um, and she's pretty confident that she'll have November and December. Um, completed, so you might be looking at uh, potentially four meetings. So.
Great.
Four meetings in total.
Good job, Miranda.
Yes, and she's getting more concise. With fewer pages, that's good. I told her once she got used to us, she'd uh. Become a little briefer. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of October nineteenth?
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, I.
Hi.
Bye.
I can see John saying his camera's not working. Okay, so any, anything else, sir?
Well, that was quick.
Longest meeting in a long time.
Uh, quite a few months, yes, um. Probably the last time we had something this long was probably uh, last October. So.
Alright, so do we have a motion to uh, adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?